April the 30th, 2021. It's 1:31. I'm Commissioner Bill Canada, and I call it to order. And we'll do the pledge, but then we're going to take a quick break and wait for some people. So let's do the pledge of allegiance and let's see. Vic, can you start us on?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of America indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vic. Like I said, because we had a scheduling conflict that wasn't apparent until 7:00 this morning, we had to put the sign on the door and get everybody over here. So we're going to give it another five minutes or so before we actually get into the agenda. So just be patient here for a few minutes, and I'm going to go get my... The session now, it's 20, well, it's 1:30, 40, what is it? Almost 1:38 now. We'll call it official time. Good enough. Anyway, this is, meeting's being recorded. It's on Zoom, and people will be able to dial in. And I think, how many we have on?
About 20.
There's 20 people. That doubles the size of what we got here. So there's 40 of you interested in the STR issue. Silence your phones if you haven't already. Make sure you did. And we've had the pledge already, for those of you that came in late. And so we'll begin with the roll call, Kelly.
Commissioner Canada.
Here.
Commissioner Flowers.
Present.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Did I hear Clint say "present"?
He did.
We just got to keep him on his toes. Okay, thank you. Audience introductions, and we'll zip through that real quick, and we won't introduce people online.
We've got a list.
So you've got the sheet. Okay.
So if anybody did sign it.
Yeah, please, please sign it. Thank you for that. Okay, and is the list going around with a pen? Yeah, so has it been already circulated? Everybody sign the list. Okay, we've got, this is a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners to specifically address the STR question. We have two things we're going to, yeah, to discuss related to that, and we'll go through an abbreviated agenda as it is an official VOCC meeting. So any items to amend here, Kelly?
No.
And Tom?
I just have one suggestion for the Commissioners, and that would be to allow Commissioner Canada the opportunity for Commissioner comments. I think we have an announcement. We can make that during this meeting.
Yes.
Official.
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
I don't have any comments, but I'm asking on behalf of the Chairman.
Yeah, I think that's fine. We do have an official...
We don't really need to amend it officially, I think.
No, you want to do it now or later?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we will, before we get into the new business, we will make, I will make an announcement. We don't have any old items. That's not even on the agenda. The announcement we're making right now is we did select a VSO officer. We had an interview last, was it Friday or Tuesday, I mean, seems like years ago. And we did interview four candidates for the VSO, the Veteran Service Officer position, and that candidate is, the person that accepted that is Jared McLean. And so he has accepted it. He'll start in two weeks, and we'll get our veterans taken care of now routinely. We've been without a Veteran Service Officer for about three months now. It's good to do that. COVID got in the way and slowed down the process. So with that announcement, we'll press on. This is a public hearing for the proposed amended zoning and planning resolution and consideration of proposed, why is it twice? It's a public hearing and it's consideration.
Yeah, then we'll consider it.
Consider it. So hearing part starts first. We want to hear from everybody for the amended agenda that went out. When did you put it back out, Jackie?
Yes.
On the web and...
On the web, that would be me. That would be me.
Oh, Kelly, I'm sorry. You know, I think Jackie does everything, she claims to.
Yeah, that's been out there for a week.
About a week. So if you haven't seen it, I hope you've read it, because we're going to be discussing that amended resolution. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Chairman, just so we are all three are on the same page.
Sure we got that right.
I'm looking at the document that actually Jackie and Vic provided, correct, initially. That's who sent it to you or you can help.
I didn't send it out. I think Jackie sent it to you guys.
So how could we make eye contact all the way back there? So I just, my point is, I'm looking at 9.10 document, short-term rentals, and it still has some yellow struck items, has two, no, one red line paragraph and two yellow struck items. Are we all looking at the same doc?
At the bottom left-hand side of the page, it will say STR Commissioner Document Changes -2.
Yeah, I'm on a different doc.
Okay.
I think what you're looking at, sir, was the document that we dealt with at our last meeting, and then we were sent another one. This, this one, in my opinion, is not the correct document today. Is that right?
The new one just incorporated those two.
It says, it does. I was just going to say, it says STR Commissioner Revision, April 22nd, 2021. Because we've gone down this road, we're getting a big discussion, and we realize we're talking about two documents, so. April 22nd, 2021. And it should have, still should have two yellow stripes and one red letter paragraph.
Matter of fact, it's got goggle-sized type there that anybody can read on the T.
Okay, mine does not have any yellow others than under density.
That's correct.
And on number six.
And nine, 103B6.
That is correct, yeah.
And then red letters to replace that. Is that correct? You may not have red letter.
Yeah, the red letters are there.
Okay.
I have a spare copy of that.
Thank you, sir.
You got an extra copy somewhere.
Jackie gave me two copies here, so if anybody in the audience needed.
Clarification. So the document that you're looking at is the document that was revised after you had your workshop.
Yes.
So most of us have always seen the document before your workshop.
That's why I'm bringing it up, because it was posted as revised.
It wasn't posted publicly that I could find.
Okay, so if I may, sir, Mr. IT man, well, I can look, I guess. I'm just going to ask you what's posted on the website, but I have to slip it real quick. Hold on.
Might be quicker if I hand it to you.
Would you like me to go over to the office and make extra copies?
Yes.
You got four? Okay, go ahead and hand them out.
And what we can do, and I'll do it, is we'll just step through it real quick. We'll tell you what was amended in section 910-2. Not, not read, I'm not going to read it, but I'll point out. We don't know. What we're approving is what the written document currently would consider, considering, what we will consider to approve to be accurate.
So to answer your question, if I may, Chairman, the current document posted on the website is not the document that was post our last meeting. And I think we're getting copies of that, right? Jackie, you need to get some?
Yes.
Do you have a workshop?
Oh, it's been posted.
But not for the documents?
No, but the workshop has been posted. So we're waiting on Jackie?
Yeah, we're just going to hang tight here for a minute. We'll get the copies for you, then we'll start. Changes we made were ones that were originally made from the meeting when you all participated and we took it and danced those comments down, and then we discussed the changes. So we incorporated comments from that meeting in this new document that you haven't seen.
Hello, may I ask a question?
Sure, real quick.
Thank you. Because we're a little confused.
Excuse me, introduce yourself. Who's speaking?
Hi, this is Tracy Dullit, and my question is, I'm trying to follow. So the new document was not posted on the website. So for those of us that are not in person, we don't have any idea what the new document is.
There's any reason why we can't get it on. It's, it's going to be. You'll see it here in a second.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You will see it's being posted on the website now.
Oh, it's being posted on the website now?
Uh-huh.
So if you could give us a couple minutes to look that over, that would be wonderful.
That's what we're going to do.
Thank you very much.
Then what I plan to do, just so you know, I will, we're going to hit each section where a change was made, and I'll read it, so you know that's, that's what it is now. We'll keep going. So as soon as we get our copies and that gets posted, I'll see. You got it in there?
I just sent it to you.
Or you just got it? Okay, thanks. Well, then you're going to take a long time. Lucky you did.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Have fees been established?
Yeah.
No, okay. So the only thing that's established is I can put this paragraph about fees, but nothing's been established.
That's right, because they, we go through a separate process for fees, like landfill fees and all. They're all going to be looked at each year and readjusted or added. And we haven't done that yet. Okay, it's on the website.
On the planning and zoning page.
Tracy and everybody that's out there in Zoom land, it's on the website under planning and zoning. Is that right, Jordan?
Yes.
You can pull that up. And so while they're doing that, let me explain what you're going to see here in a minute when she brings it in. We did consolidate it. We changed, we, remember, this, we approved at the meeting you all were at last, the planned changes short of the STRs. And so we're only addressing the STRs today. Some of this refers back to the other sections that were already approved, so just so you know. Also, the introduction, we came, instead of just blasting into regulatory, I think the first 10 dot 1 was regulation of an STR permit. Instead of that, we set the stage with an introduction that involves five sections that are there, and I'm going to read through those when we get, you guys have a, have a copy, and we'll just state it so you understand. We want to make sure everybody's on the same playing ground, so you're not asking questions that may not be relevant, or they may be, you know, we want to make sure what you're asking, we can find the hole and we'll fix it. And then we went through the next sections and integrated the comments we heard the day you were there, our own comments that we had personally, and had a workshop with planning and zoning to make sure everybody understood what they were and what they were relevant. And of course, we didn't make decisions in that meeting. That's what this is all about, is now that they're integrated the way it looked like everybody makes sense to people that have reviewed it, then we'll vote on whether we accept this change or not.
At the end, the limits is struck upon listening to the Zoom meeting. You wanted to defer that decision to them.
For what?
Limits, or density limits?
No, we're not going to defer.
We did defer to this meeting, yes.
Yes, you're right.
We're going to, we're going to discuss density in this meeting.
So that was a question. I mean, it's deleted here if there's...
Right, the working copy, it's struck, but we never approved that or disapproved it. We just left it until...
We said it's me, because there were several options and, and we're going to discuss that, so you guys input on. Yeah. Who did we send to make those copies? Was that Jackie? You said, where'd you look at?
She's looking for fresh coffee.
She might be coughing.
She missed lunch. I hope she didn't go back.
May not be coming back. And Jackie wanted to make it clear, she doesn't vote. She just makes, brings the recommendations that the zoning and planning pulls together under Vic's direction, although she did volunteer Vic to go out on inspection and charge fees. But that was just her vote then. Here she comes. So there's why. See the hand?
For the folks on the Zoom for this meeting, the IT department placed that entire document in the chat box. So if you click on that, there's a link there. You can open that as well.
Way to go. Anybody, let's get all the copies out there, so.
We have lots of copies.
There's more copies. Need one back there, Lucas? Need one back there, Lucas? Everybody happy they got one? Another copy here, Lucas, you want another one? Right there.
Take them, take native.
Okay, take a quick time, take a quick second look at it, the introduction, we'll just talk, we'll just talk through here, but there are five paragraphs there referring to statutes and also clarification that Kearney, our attorney Clint Smith had suggested as well. So, let's take a quick look and then I'm gonna just briefly. All right, I'll paraphrase that first paragraph, it's just referring to the statutes Colorado revised, or the county commissioners that were given to, also section thirty-one to four oh one powers that are granted. So these are just citing statutes where, as used in subsection that describes it as owners, agents, it does not include an internet hospitality service, so is there any question on that, that was an issue that was brought in our last meeting? So if there's not any, we'll just press on. Okay, so then the second one, paragraph B, is based on the statutory authority cited above, and the Colorado Department of Revenue and the Board of Commissioners states that the commissioners are empowered to license and regulate STRs in the Custer County and to classify them as businesses. They are already classified as a business, it's a residential business, a commercial business by state and federal regs and IRS. And so that's all we're doing, is coming in line with that and recognizing that designation. And so for regulatory purposes, the same reason that the US IR Internal Service classifies STRs as businesses, because they generate taxable income for the property owners. Any question on that, that's just a statement.
I have a question or comment, I guess, are we gonna go through this paragraph by paragraph?
No, but just, I just wanted to get the stage set first and then we'll, then we'll handle that. If you've got a point.
Just on the introduction, nine point one zero point one, paragraph one, it's nine ten one A. The language, the last sentence in there, as used in this subsection, owners agent does not include an internet hospitality service. Initially, I was in a fog about that, I checked with counsel. For the rest of this document, if we talk about an owner's agent, then obviously, we're not talking about if they're hosted on a platform. The hosting platform does not become the owner's agent, is that?
Yeah, the way their advertisement.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and that's what we pointed out just a minute ago. And paragraph B was just a statement in here that we didn't have before, we just said they're classified as this, and we referred to it and we said that it was because the IRS and the state. Section C, the licensing under the Regulation of Authority conferred, does not affect whether a lodging unit is a residential improvement as defined in the other section that's defined there, which reads residential improvements, means a building that, or that portion of a building designed to, for use predominantly as a place of residency by a person or a family or family. Term includes buildings, structures, fences, amenities, and water rights that are an integral part for residential use. Just clarification of terms.
Quick technical question for Vic and Jackie, if I may go. Only because I said it on those upper arc water conservancy meetings, monthly, are we are we okay to call these water rights for residential use? According to the law, it's not truly a water right, are we all right with leaving that language in there?
I would like to see it removed, because a water right is not what, you don't have a water right.
You have the right to use water for resin, but you don't have a.
Right to use water, the water belongs to the state.
That's right.
So it's not a water right like a ranch or whatnot.
Yeah, I mean legally, it has to be an adjudicated water right, and this really doesn't apply, because it's a permit granted by the state to use the water. So how about permitted use of the water as an integral part of the residence?
I think this is a quote.
Oh, that's right, we're inside of the document, aren't we? Okay, nevermind.
For the remarks at the end, but.
All right.
Okay.
I can clarify that, so we probably should have some quotes at the end of the word use?
Yes.
Yeah. Where is that?
Yeah.
The term residential improvements, which is a double quote there.
That entire paragraph's in quotes, correct?
Correct.
All right, so do you want to take that, print that, with the print that?
Single print.
Well, one of them has to go off a residential improvement, that double one probably, if you're gonna double.
That's the statute. Because it's, they're identifying residential improvements within the parenth-.
Yeah, I see. Okay, double, all right. All right, clear, as mud, okay, good. STRs are not, this is paragraph D, classified as commercial properties in this zoning road, as commercial properties in this zoning resolution are not subject to a different property tax rate. Such properties are subject to being taxed at the residential rate established by the state of Colorado. Residential status of STRs in Custer County is not changed or altered in any way by the addition of this subsection nine point ten, should be pretty clear. Okay. Paragraph E, many subdivisions in Custer County have protected covenants or restrictive covenants that were adapted at the time the subdivisions were created, we discussed this at length. Because the Custer County, now this needs to be, does not, the county does not enforce these covenants, they are not part of the zoning resolution. The enforcement of covenants is the exclusive purview of HOAs, homeowners associations, and POAs, the property owner associations, if there are any. By classifying the STRs as a business for regulatory purposes, the county is not intending to change or alter the meaning of any covenants now in effect. The county is not directing or attempting to direct the HOAs or POAs to treat their property owners any differently than they would in this section ten, if this section ten, nine point ten had not been adapted, adopted and incorporated into the Custer County zoning resolution. Makes sense? Okay, that brings on the regu- nine dot ten dot two, the regulation of an STR permit. Turn the page and you get paragraph A and B on that. An STR permit may be granted or denied at the discretion of the BOCC, whose determination shall be based on the purposes, standards, and requirements regarding special use as set forth under section nine point seven, it's referring back to the document approved, and appropriate provisions of section, section seven and eight of this resolution. In granting an STR permit, the BOCC may impose additional conditions in order to comply with the purposes and intent of this resolution. Straightforward. STR permit modifications must follow the same process as a new STR permit. Questions? Okay. Nine ten dot three, application for that STR permit. Paragraph A, general standards for granting an STR permit, number one, this, I think is where we started modifying things. General standards for granting an STR permit, all applicable federal, state, and local licenses and or permits are obtained, more generally stated have been obtained, is a requirement. Number two, must have a legal water supply and sanitary facility. If we're cracking that, I guess we, we need a period after that first one, I guess, if we're gonna get real money. Number three, the STR will not require a level of community facilities and service greater than what is available. Everybody understand that? Questions?
Services should be plural, I think, sir.
I do too. STR will not require a level of community facilities and services greater than what is available. Number four, the STR does not cause significant impacts beyond the property's boundary. Meaning you can't let your trash, just like a resident, if your trash starts blowing out, it becomes a health issue for your neighbor, theoretically could, and is an issue for them, then they're under the same requirements as a homeowner.
Is the good neighbor policy, is that available online or?
Good question, Jackie?
No, not until this is approved.
No, the good neighbor policy?
It goes with.
Oh, yes, oh, okay.
And they'll have a hard copy given to you, whoever applies for a permit will have that hard copy.
So you'll have a hard copy given to you when you apply for your permit, and then you're gonna have to initial it.
Another question, should it be or can it be on the website? Under planning and zoning, or does it need to be?
Is it already, or will it, were you planning to put it on the website?
Would I put the permit on and stuff?
Okay.
Well, I'm just wondering, the good neighbor policy does apply beyond the short term article.
Yeah, that's the point, it applies to everybody that's, when they come in for a building permit. I thought you had said you were, that's part of the process.
We have like a homeowners packet, the good neighbor policy just states the roads, be careful on the roads. It's just, it just tells you about our wildlife, we have wildlife policies, go feed the wildlife and stuff, it's just a good neighbor policy.
But I think she's asking, is it currently on the website, or could it be put on the website? Because it really doesn't have anything to do with this necessarily, it's a planning and zoning document, right?
Yeah, and it's good for all of us to be.
And I think when anybody applies and wants to buy a property and build something, it'd be nice for them to know. Coming from out of town, what's going on? Okay. The next one, paragraph B, is some specific requirements. We all went through this and we distilled the ones, and there is one that we're still gonna discuss here in a minute. But the first one is a reflective address marker must be displayed at the driveway entrance. Bottom hem on house, on the entrance, the reason for that was fire emergencies and other things, so people can find it.
Is that a policy that should be applied to pretty much every developed property for the benefit of emergency services?
It's already, it's already, it's already required, new builds are required to do it, but not.
Making it retroactive?
No, we don't make things retro.
But the language is in there.
People coming and building new ones. Hey, bunk houses, this was an issue and we fixed it, made it clear, bunk houses and accessory structures cannot, and that was the reason it's highlighted, be rented as STRs, that's always been the case. And see, and you can see six four, refers back to the other section earlier. I think everybody knew that anyway. Any questions on that? All right, occupancy of an STR, will require a permitted onsite wastewater, that's a septic system, treatment system. STR owners shall not advertise occupancy rates greater than allowed by their permits. That was an issue, I think, how many we had? Eighteen of twenty-two? Twenty-nine of them that were advertising something in Washington DC that was a lot greater than what the actual capability of the system is. That doesn't mean, just like he was a resident, you can go out and get pork bodies, put them in there if you're gonna have more, whatever, party or whatever. Any other questions on that? Each owner of an STR property shall designate a responsible agent, there's the definition. The owner may designate himself or herself as that responsible agent. The name and telephone number of that designated responsible agent shall be conspicuously posted within the STR dwelling. The responsible agent must be available at all times to answer calls for each, for the duration of each STR rental period, to address problems associated with the STR. That doesn't mean, that means, that's the phone number we're gonna have, they gotta get ahold of you and address it. Might be not there and available at that minute, they'll keep calling, they'll just be available to answer the phone.
Just a quick point, Jackie, B one should have a period at the end of it as well. B one should have a period at the end of that statement.
Okay, any questions on the responsible agent answering the telephone? Number five, the STR owner must notify the Custer County Planning and Zoning Office in writing within five days of a change of designated responsible agent. Okay. Six, we struck. The STR, I'm gonna read the strike, the STR permit shall not be transferred or assigned to another individual or entity. The issue, we went round and around on, and the new reading is, as it is in red, an STR permit once issued for a specific property may be transferred to the subsequent purchaser of said property. The transfer, this transfer will be an administrative action by the Custer County Planning and Zoning Office in which the new owner must submit an updated application for, but will not be assessed an application fee. The STR permit shall be offered otherwise transferred or assigned or conveyed to another individual or entity, nor shall it be used to operate an STR at any address other than the address expressly stated in the language of the permit. Pretty straightforward, answers a lot of your concerns that we had before. Number seven. An STR permit does not authorize any person other than the permit holder to, or responsible agent named therein to operate the STR on the property. Okay, page three. An STR permit, number eight, in good standing, must be renewed annually with a renewal fee to be determined, yeah, we mentioned that earlier, as an administrative action by the County Planning and Zoning Office. Question is, annually means that the date from the, when it was initially issued. Questions on that?
Do we need to address in here in parentheses, see the current fee schedule or not? How would people know?
We have the fee schedule on the wall. We don't post it because it changes once in a while. But we oughta, when we get this, when we get the fee schedule done, then we'll know, and it ought to be an announcement of the payment.
Yeah, I'm just asking, should this language in this amendment say, with a renewal fee as indicated in the current fee schedule?
As posted in the zoning office or something to that.
So, why don't we just do a short, like, synopsis? In a, in a proverbic, can you just say it again, please?
I would suggest in that we add the word after the word fee.
The word current, I think you used.
Yeah, with a renewal fee as stated in the current fee schedule, the county's current. The county's current fee
Per, they per the county's current fee schedule. As an administrative action by the County Planning and Zoning Office. Okay.
Clarification, so will the fee schedule be posted online, or people can only see it if they come to the office?
What has been in the past, and always is, and now is, it's posted in the office only. Now, we can put it online, I guess, no reason why not. Put it on the planning zoning website, or portion of the website. Will you admit your visit with Jackie? Yeah, see, there's, you're giving up the visit to see Jackie.
Hey, I don't have a short term rental.
So if I may, sir, I'll read what I think of the Greek deal, and then you can check me on it.
Hey, Jackie, listen up.
May I ask a question?
Just a second, let's repeat it.
Okay.
So, the way I read it, number eight would be an STR permit in good standing must be renewed annually with a renewal fee per the county's current fee schedule as an administrative action by the Planning and Zoning Office.
Good, Jackie.
Kevin, you okay with that?
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay, ask your question, who is it, say your name first.
Hi, this is Tracy Gullett again, I just have a quick question. So, the STRs that have been operating, some for twenty years, some for two, some for five, this document does not protect the existing short terminals that have been operating, this is, so in other words, this is for all of us, even us that have been operating for many years, we have to go through this process, this is not just for new short term rentals.
That's true.
Thank you.
Any comment, Jackie? You heard what she said?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That was number eight, number nine, STR permits must be renewed thirty days prior to the annual expiration date, or the permit will be terminated. Be terminated, and the owner will be required to submit a new application for the STR permit that's desired. Question on that? Just gives you that window, and you hit that deadline, like, if you have a license plate, they'll arrest you.
Counsel, should we identify what expiration date? Should we say to the annual expiration date of the existing permit, or is it, will most people understand that?
I think it's pretty clear the way it's packaged. You put that language in there.
I think
Annual expiration date. It's gonna be right on the application.
The date will be. Okay. All right, any points on that section? We'll go to C. Applicant for an STR permit shall, number one, the applicant shall provide proof of ownership of the property. Number two, arrange a pre-conference with the Planning and Zoning Office. The chairperson of the Planning Commission, or his representative, you wanna spell that out? Just as normally, before you put a Planning Commission and put in Prince PC, because then there was, ever after, you can put PC, it's been defined. Or his representative will be invited to participate, other individuals may be included. Any other questions on that one?
I think in the document in the beginning, isn't it, Jackie, they go through the acronyms, is it PC indicated at the beginning of that zoning resolution as Planning Commission?
Acronyms, maybe that'll do it. Okay. Number three, submit a written Go ahead.
I only bring this up because this may or may not be the last time we deal with this document. So, I think it's worded correctly, number two, C2, with the exception, if we go into the second sentence, it says, the chairperson of the PC or his representative. I think we should delete the word his and put in a representative. His denotes that the chairperson's gonna be a male, that's not always
Say, you could say chairperson or designated representative.
Yeah, I like that, or a designated representative, does that make sense?
Designated.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or a designated.
Representative.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch.
Thanks.
Number three, submit a written application to the Planning and Zoning Office at least thirty days prior to the proposed meeting date, along with proper fees, and such evidence may be necessary to demonstrate compliance with the conditions and requirements set forth for the particular use according to this resolution. Good?
You inserted the word as
Thank you, took the words right out of my mouth.
Would be an active voice there.
Well, this shows he's paying attention.
Yeah, I like that. Now, where was that at?
Three, second
Which sentence?
Second line, at the end of the second line in three, as may be
As may be necessary, as necessary would work with that. We'll let Clint win one.
Has the written application been developed yet, or that's the next step? It's been developed?
Okay. Next, any other ones on that, and we'll move to four. Four, appear in person or by authorized representative at a regularly scheduled meeting of the PC to present the application. And in parentheses, we state that arrangements may be made through the Planning and Zoning Office, you could schedule it through that office. Questions?
Can I just recommend that you might put the phone number or the email, just to make it easy for the applicant to know where to do this, instead of searching?
I don't know, it's a living document that could change.
This is going in the resolution, and the resolution has it in there.
Oh, at the beginning, it has a phone number for the Planning and Zoning Office, and her, so that should take care. All right. Number five, is it appear in person or by authorized representative at the designated site tour if deemed necessary by the Planning Commission or the VOCC.
Can I go back to four, sir?
Oh.
And just clarification, if I may, Jackie, Vic, so I understand the intent here, appear in person at a regular scheduled meeting, so you couldn't call a special meeting to deal with it, it has to be at a regular meeting.
No. Whatever, we don't, we have a calendar of scheduled meetings, I agree, so let's just get rid of the word regular.
You bank what you do normally, and it's the way you describe it to us. You give many applications, you could have three STR applications at the same time, and so rather than having a special meeting with each one, you
Or I do a batch.
Batch, yeah.
So, let's, I think he is more concerned about the calendar that we put out every year, the scheduled meeting, so if we just got written the word regular, option there, it would just say at a scheduled meeting.
And that would allow you to schedule.
Say at a meeting.
Yeah.
Just take out regularly scheduled, and just put at a meeting?
It's just a scheduled, a scheduled meeting, which could be
I'm good with that.
Good.
So we're deleting the words regularly scheduled, is that correct?
At a scheduled meeting.
No, at a meeting of the PC, is that right, Vic?
Just scheduled or scheduled meeting, what do you want to get rid of?
Regularly scheduled.
Okay.
Regularly scheduled.
Okay, number five, appear in person, I've read it, or by authorized representative at designated site tours deemed, as deemed, if deemed necessary by the PC and VOCC. Any issues?
So the VOCC could request a site tour, then according to this language? And is that standard practice?
According to this, it's you could. But to be consistent, we don't have the VOCC in any, so let's be consistent and get rid of or the VOCC.
Before you do that, the only reason we would require it is if you had an issue with STR, and we wanted to see it.
Yeah, but this is the first part of the application.
So it's just, okay.
It's really for Planning Commission to do the site tour, right?
Yeah.
So, I think it, I think that would be a catch.
I would, I would agree.
I agree.
So we're gonna take out or the VOCC semicolon and put in period after PC, is that correct?
Thank you.
Why was the semicolon in there?
Typo.
Got a typo, so you have to, get rid of three, that's the exercise of the little finger, look at three. You got a semicolon after three, was there a
I said semicolon, it was actually a colon, so, yeah, so we're gonna end that then, number five, with if deemed necessary by the PC, period.
Do you wanna, do you wanna go back up to
Three.
Three and the period?
I don't know why it wasn't.
Well.
Totally like, semicolons. If you wanna get, I think you, Jackie, there's an extra space between requirements and set forth.
What number?
I mean, number three.
Thank you, I saw that, I saw that. I read through that, I didn't let it bother me. It didn't bother me, Debbie, just Okay, six. Appear in person or by authorized representative at meetings of the PC and VOCC to present the application if deemed necessary by the PC and VOCC, should it be or?
No.
This is still the application process, right? C isn't involved in it.
Yeah, that's why I was with us.
I think the VOCC could be taken out of both of those lines, really.
I do, too.
If it's the application process, which is what C is titled.
Okay, so, would you like to, appear in person or by authorized representative at meetings of the PC to present the application? If deemed necessary by the PC.
I would agree with that.
Semicolon, good. If deemed necessary. Okay. All right. Section D, the Planning and Zoning Office shall, and this is a colon, is that okay? Number one, meet with the applicant or applicants in the pre-application conference. Two, review the application and associated documentation, I don't mind all these sudden assumptions.
Oh, I was gonna say, I'm taking them out and putting in periods to be consistent, yes.
If we're gonna do that, because she was being consistent here. Either one way or the other, Jackie, periods.
Consistent and correct, maybe two different things.
That's true. All right. Application associated with documentation, number three, schedule the application as an agenda item at a regularly scheduled PC meeting, period.
Again, does that have to be regularly scheduled, is that accurate?
Four, research and verify the applicant's request and documentation, period. Five, notify adjacent property owners by certified return received mail. And we learned a lesson, maybe, do you wanna do and regularly?
No. I wanna return receipt.
All right.
That's why we don't do regular, because you can deny and I would never have it
Never know.
Like a H state.
Yeah, that's the point. Good. All right. Provide the PC background information concerning the application. A list of suggested conditions.
A comma needs to come out.
It does. You read the comma.
Did you hear that, Jackie?
Yes.
A list of suggested conditions and areas of concern prior to the PC meeting at which the application is presented, period. Any questions on that?
So they would not have a comma in there?
It does not.
It should be a comma after application.
I think so, otherwise, those are two separate lines there.
Yeah, you're right. So, it's a list of things they need to do, including
These three.
Presenting a list, so yeah, I apologize.
Including, okay.
So there's three things in there they should provide, right? Yeah, there's an argument on a comma preceding the word and.
Yeah, and in my, in my world, the comma doesn't go in the, in the English grammar world.
What world do you live in?
I got slapped on the hand at budget school.
We could bring in Barb Jones, but let's not.
Barb would throw the comma out your, yeah. All right. Number seven. Schedule a site tour if deemed necessary, again, by the site, by the Planning and Zoning Office. Okay?
Yes.
Where's the period?
I put it in right after office.
Number eight.
Phil, what's the difference between a site tour in D and the site tour in C?
Because you did some
Well, they're the same, it's just articulating what the Planning and Zoning Commission should do.
Yeah.
The applicant needs to do it, the Planning Commission needs to do it.
Eight, ensure a public notice appears in the newspaper of record in Custer County that's set forth in section nine, three, two of this resolution, period. Not an issue. The PC shall, number E here, review the application and accompany evidence prior to the meeting when the application is presented. The review shall include, should that be a colon? I think so.
It is a colon.
Okay. My slur here. Eight, the report prepared by the Planning and Zoning Office. Now, are we gonna get consistent here, or are we gonna, because it's a mix? Right, so there's a, there's a colon, colon, period in the free subparagras, what are we doing?
There's a semicolon, semicolon, period.
That makes sense.
You're saying because they're subs?
Yeah, that makes sense.
They're not standalone, so
So it's like one sentence, we sectioned out to see it. Any issues on those three? Number two, develop a list of possible conditions pertinent to the application, period. Number three, hold a public meeting to hear the application. Period. Period. Next page, number four. Make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, including pertinent findings supporting the recommended actions, period. Okay. Described actions. And F, the BCC's job shall review the application and accompany evidence before taking action on the application. Such evidence shall include all items included in the review and study by the PC, as well as the recommendations by the PC, period.
From the PC, not by.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping over it. It's recommendations from the PC.
Period.
Period. Grant or deny the application, comma as indicated in section ten or nine, ten, two. Should that be a comma there, I think, should be. I do, too. Comma after the two, Jackie. At a VOCC meeting, period.
What did you want?
And that's my English teacher said.
Grant or deny the application, comma. You don't want the commas?
No, we do. Want that comma, then there should be another comma as indicated in section nine dot two dot, ten dot two, comma.
Because that's an internal segment of the sentence.
Right.
Okay.
And at the, and at a VOCC meeting. Okay, did you get that, Jackie?
I have all these men yelling at me, what?
Number nine, dot, ten, dot, four, any, any issues, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if a permit is denied, if there is the opportunity for the owner to have an appeal.
Yeah, good question, there should be. But that's a process that we have.
Right, it's already in your library.
It's a zoning resolution, okay.
Off, you can always
Nine point one, oh, point four, I have a problem. A schedule of fees maintained in the Planning and Zoning Office has been established by the VOCC for STR permits and renewals, not modifications.
Right, and I think Right. And I think, Clint, it should say, instead of has been, it should be as established, correct?
They mean has been established.
After planning and zoning office, as established by the V O C C. Pardon?
It hasn't been yet.
Yeah, as established.
But it would be established. That's true.
Schedule of fees maintained in the planning and zoning office.
As established by the V O C C.
And we're going to delete modifications?
And I'm going to put a renewal.
Were we talking about modifications?
Yeah, we did.
A lot of ways. Put modifications and renewals.
Well, that's a good idea.
So it should include modifications.
Uh, just add the word renewal.
Period.
And add.
So then you're going to include modifications in your fee schedule?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, so there's three, three items. There's S T R permits, there are renewals, and there are modifications. So there's a comma between permits.
Correct.
And the other one, and leave the one off. There you go. All right.
So the comma after permits.
And then.
And then.
Then it's the word renewal.
And renewal, the N, correct? Modifications and renewals?
Yeah, there's only, yeah, get rid of the N, put a comma, put modifications and renewals.
The problem is, you know, as right above that, the only authority that V O C C has is to grant or deny, say, or to modify the application.
Yeah, that's a good catch.
So we need to add.
Should be a little modify, huh?
If you're going to have a fee to modify, you better be happy or you can modify.
Right. So number two would be grant, deny, or modify, correct?
Grant, deny.
What would be an example of modifying an application?
Uh, they could get some work done on their septic and come in and want to modify it for increased.
Increased capacity.
Capacity would be one.
I'm wondering, is it, should say, instead of reviewing the application, reviewing the, the recommendation? Because you're actually reviewing the recommendation.
That's true. We don't, well, we, would we look at the application or not?
If it's a mod.
We do?
Yeah.
Or we would, I'm sorry. How about review the application and recommendation?
Yeah, you get the application in your package.
So really, then it would be review the application, comma, recommendation, and accompanying evidence, right?
Correct.
Review the application, the recommendations. And the what?
And accompanying evidence. On number one, that makes sense. Review the application, comma, recommendation, and accompanying evidence.
Yeah. Okay.
So then the three would be, or two would be grant, deny, or modify, correct?
Right.
The application.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Applicants may be required to pay additional postage and professional fees as deemed appropriate by the P C for the, for compliance with section nine dot seven.
What exactly?
You lost me right there, sir.
That, oops.
You know, is someone given, like, okay, if there's additional postage, which that's not a big deal, but professional fees, that seems a little open ended.
Well, that's when the lawyer comes in and jerks him. Because I'll step on my toes.
Okay.
I mean, is, is the applicant told, oh, there's this professional fee that you have to pay?
Just off the top of my head, if there was a dispute over the property boundaries, we might have to hire a surveyor to reestablish those. Just as, just a possible, maybe, but.
So it's not necessarily that the applicant gets this surprise bill in the mail for a thousand dollars?
No.
It would be discussed with the applicant first and explained why it might be necessary.
Okay.
And those fees would have to be covered by, and sometimes accounting has to do it with our survey.
Could be a professional fee to modify a septic tank or septic system or.
Yeah, engineer, yeah, septic system. Got to hire an engineer.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on to nine, ten, five. Public notice and meeting procedures. A, before granting an S T R permit, the P C and the V O C C shall hold a meeting or meetings in compliance with appendix E. And that's of this doc, correct? And, you know, to burn anybody else. Notice of such meeting and the subject matter shall be published, comma.
Shouldn't be a comma.
That's a problem there.
That's a sentence.
Period. At the expense, now let's see, we got a bigger.
No period. Just at the expense of the applicant.
That's right. At the expense of an applicant in the newspaper record at least fourteen days prior to the meeting date. Period. In case of a wildfire review or items of state interest.
Wildlife.
Wildlife. I'm used to seeing wildfires. Or items of state interest, the notice shall be at least thirty days prior to the meeting day. It'd be hard to meet it after a wildfire. Or before. Any questions on that? B, written notice for the first meeting shall be mailed certified return receipt to the owners of properties adjacent to the property in question. The mailing should be at least fourteen days prior to the meeting day. Clint, does that require exactly, is that like a shall or a must?
It should be a shall.
That's what I was, what I was thinking.
Should be just a suggestion.
Yeah. Such written notice shall be mailed to the last address of record held by the Custer County Assessor's Office. Failure to mail such notice due to clerical omissions shall not be, shall not affect validity of any meeting or determination of the V O C C.
Can I speak to that real quick?
Yeah, go ahead, because I got.
I know probably you're sitting in the audience going, geez, are these guys anal or what? Well, we just spent over half an hour in our last meeting this morning discussing this very thing. A person said she never got her notice. Well, it's not our responsibility to make sure an adjacent property owner gets it. It's our responsibility to send out that notice. So we had a big to do about that. Um, it's unfortunate, but that's why this kind of language is in here, in my opinion.
And it's partly due to each person, you have a, some people have mailboxes out there, and, and some of them have boxes, and the wind blows, and notices get on doors that get blown off. So it's up to the owner to, they're, they're responsible to make sure they stay on top of what's going on.
Hi, may I ask a question?
Who is this?
This is Amanda Brookmeyer, Peter Brookmeyer, and we have a, a house on, um, Callas Road.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. What happens if the meeting that you're notifying gets delayed or, uh, or your agenda gets full? Does that make sense? I know a lot of county commissioners, you guys have a pretty full agenda, or if a weather incident comes up, is there any, um, direction for the applicant, um, they need to resend that?
Good point.
It does, like when we had the COVID, uh, we sent, we had to delay one of our meetings, so we sent out letters to all the, again, certified, to all the joining landowners stating that the meeting has been postponed. We also made sure that the local paper got and put postponed right across the ad. So that's how we notify everyone.
Did you?
We do every effort to notify somebody.
Did you hear that, Amanda?
Yes, thank you.
So that would be, if we, just for more clarification, then if that was postponed, that would have to be postponed out two weeks. Okay.
Again, a question here, counsel and Jackie and Vic. Um, B, I'm, we're still in B. It really doesn't say who's going to do that, correct? Should we say, written notice of the first meeting shall be provided by the planning and zoning office? I mean, this is not the commissioners doing this.
Really?
But the only reference here is the V O C C, correct?
So if you go back to the first, what the P C, what the zoning office has to do on week two, they're the ones that have to do that.
So you think it's already addressed?
Uh-huh, definitely so.
Paragraph A kind of addresses it. It says that P C will hold a meeting.
So where, where's that section that says what the zoning office will do?
We're, we're.
B. D three. Phil?
Yeah, D five.
Thank you.
Notify adjacent property owners by certified.
So the question would be, is not who does it. The question would be, do we need it there? Again. Because it's, it's already identified that the zoning office has to.
Right, but it doesn't address wildlife reviews or other, uh, environmental issues, Indian ruins, that kind of thing.
No, it doesn't address wildlife reviews, but then you would go back to, it doesn't need a wildlife review. And the wildlife review is its own section in the zoning resolution.
So she has a good point, Tom. That's, you're, you're talking about paragraph B, first sentence. It may not be necessary to have. Is that what you're saying?
Written notice of the first, yeah, I don't even know why that's in there.
You could have, you know, paragraph B could start out, the mailing should, a mailing, you're going to have to figure out how you're going to.
Well, I think it clarifies, uh, it clarifies that D five, that it has more detail, like fourteen days.
Yeah.
And the last address, so.
I would agree.
I don't think it hurts to have it.
No, it's a little redundant, but it does add some additional information that's not addressed anywhere else in this part of the amendment.
Correct.
So I'm okay with it.
Okay, leave it.
Okay, thank you.
Can we then? Okay, C, or are we that far in this one?
Yeah.
C, applicants or applicant may be required to pay additional postage, if postage for all likable meetings exceeds twenty percent of the application fee. What cost is, you just talked about the building?
Um, so every adjoining landlord gets a certified letter. So we base that on, um, if you are one of those lucky people that have eight people adjoining you instead of the one or four.
Which we have that currently in another situation that we're making with.
Any comments, anybody? Okay, we'll press on. Nine dot, ten dot, six, violations and penalties. A, an activity conducted in any form with a pending S T R permit application is a violation of this resolution and will result in termination of the S T R application process. Clear?
I got a couple of recommendations on this.
Go ahead, Clint.
Um, it should be, I think, an activity conducted on the property while an S T R permit application is pending is a violation of this resolution. It shall result in termination.
Whoa, let me quiz that. Advertising an S T R, a wedding venue, you're doing an advertisement, you're not doing it on the property per se as an activity.
Which would, his suggestion would allow that, right?
Would it?
And, and we got into this before, right? Can you advertise that you're going to have an S T R operating before the permit's been?
Or do you not want them doing that?
No.
That's right. I don't think so.
Well, you've got to get it.
So. But the existing ones are already grandfathered in, so you're not going to, in the beginning of the document, you can keep on advertising. We all decided on that one.
Where is that?
It's not. That was a verbal discussion.
Grandfathered. I think we did.
We did, there was a discussion that no one's going to be shut down, and you're all going to get a period of time to apply for.
And that was in the initial stuff we approved already.
Let's not have a little detail.
No, there's no language in it. That was a verbal discussion at a prior meeting, but
Well.
Once we get through this, that should never apply again, right?
Correct.
Subsequent commissioners shouldn't have to deal with that because this language would be in place. So I don't know, Clint. Um, I understand what you're saying. Initially, I agreed with it, but uh, we have refrained intentionally from using the word grandfathered. So I don't know. If, if we say on the property, then that excludes advertising.
Or, yeah, I mean, it can get more worrying, any activity promoting the S T R or anything.
Any activity, including, if you want.
Well, yeah, but.
There's some activity, unless it's to the property owner, hopefully the application is going to be permitted. It expands its system and anticipations of that. I don't see that that should be.
That would be okay. So how do we want to word it then?
How about any activity, something about with the conduct, operating an S T R?
Yeah, it wouldn't have anything to do with building. It would have to do with operating in business or starting a business before you have it.
Does, does that A really apply more to new, uh, short term rentals? Than, than all the rentals that exist now?
Yeah, that's correct. Any, how do we handle it? Because I thought we had that written in.
No, it was just a, it should be, it's a verbal that should be, uh, on our minutes.
How about with a pending new S T R permit?
Or we say with any new S T R, just it's not, yeah.
Well, it would be, it'd still be pending until it was approved. That's the problem.
Let's just give the word new as well.
What do you think, counsel?
Yeah, let's just say new, not pending, because it's a new permit application.
Any activity, any activity conducted, is formed with a new S T R permit. And in that way, these guys are new. We got a list of them. They're old.
How about, could we just insert new between A and pending?
I would agree with that.
Pending in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
You want to use shall or may?
I put in shall. Because that's consistent with the rest of the zoning resolution, right?
It is.
Shall is absolute, may is same. Just like discretion.
Because we got into that as well, with activity being conducted while the permit was pending. So I think shall is the appropriate word.
But it, now let's talk about it. Is there a, is there a pending, or is there some activity that could be allowed?
There is, but that would, we have to use a little common sense here.
Yeah.
If we have a, uh,
I start now.
A S T R that's enlarged in their septic, that's not with their, that's a whole different.
Yeah, that's okay.
That's okay. That's a whole different ballgame.
So you need to allow.
What do you think the timeframe will be if, if this is adopted? The timeframe from I put in my application, I get approved?
Thirty days. Hopefully. No, wait, that was a lie. Thirty days. I have to have thirty days to get the newspaper and send your adjoining, then you would be scheduled on the filing mission. Then the first, uh, appointment that we can get with V O C C. So probably two months.
Great barrier to an emergency.
Okay, so let's go back, Clint, so that we can cover, if somebody decides to make an S T R out of an existing home they have, and they're going to modify their septic system, that ought to be allowed.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, we're really talking about, you're jumping, guys, starting to advertise and taking.
Right, on a new.
How about we say any business conducted? Putting a septic, redoing a septic would necessarily.
If any modification to do that would be okay to prepare it for the application.
Any business conducted?
Prior to approval of the S T, with pending permit or permanent application.
You want to write that down, because Jackie's not paying attention.
I just put any business. How about any business conducted with a new pending S T R permit?
That's all right.
Let's get to it.
Again, I agree with Jackie. There's some common sense could be applied, but that goes out the window when you're in court.
Common sense.
See, that would be determined by you initially.
Look at me, I have a common sense.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so fix it. How to fix it?
And by Kelly's suggestion, and I agree with her, any business conducted with a pending new S T R permit, pending needs to go to be inclusive of a new S T R brand. So any business conducted with a pending new S T R permit application is violation. Does that sound reasonable?
And?
Well, business is a very broad word. What are you talking about? Are you talking about the cat can't, the short-term rental client business?
Yeah.
Business to, business is too broad.
That's, that's true.
But business in, but it's in a document that's dealing with the short-term rounds. So business would be the business that's associated with that short-term round.
That's the point you're trying to make, you could say with clients, where you're trying to get somebody to rent your place. So any activity to do that, like booking a wedding, would be a violation, that's a business. So they're saying with that, with that client, or however you want to say it, as opposed to the business of preparing it for.
Yeah, well, if you book a wedding, or let's say you book a three-day rental, while your S T R application is pending, that's business and that's a violation, or shouldn't we?
What's the big deal with that? Because I'm taking the risk of advertising it while I'm in basically suspension until I get that.
You can't have them actually renting it.
Risk of not, all of a sudden the approval doesn't go through, and I've got renters that show up and hey, well, sorry, I can't rent it because I didn't get permission.
That's true, it's your risk.
Otherwise, you guys are taking the responsibility for me that the government should.
And what if you went ahead and allowed those people to stay while you have it pending?
Then he loses.
Then I'm in violation.
Right.
So you can't allow, but you could, you could stage a problem, I don't.
Can I make a point?
I often put in.
Just one second, I'll get you.
Months worth of work improving a place, this would be violation of that. But then fixing the debt, making it safe, making it, I mean, it takes months to get these, something to perform to the right, that's back.
And back to that common sense, I wouldn't look at that as business.
No.
I would look at that as preparatory work to open a business.
So that's activity.
We took it out.
We took it out. We're taking activity out, we put business in place of activity.
Yeah, we took.
I think we're looking for the word reservation?
No, because it could be way beyond that.
Can I make a point?
Go ahead, make a point, who, what's your name?
Andrew Miller. I think what we're trying to say is there can be no reservations during a new pending application.
Well, they may be saying that, I think we're talking about more than just reservations.
But if, if we're just like, if we're just talking about advertising, that's just a, I mean, that's a First Amendment point that, like you said, we're, we're taking the risk. If we don't get approved, then we can't make the reservation, we can't complete it.
Or if you didn't think you're gonna open up, three months later, and you don't, and you got somebody, that's your risk.
Exactly, just like any other business, getting an application, they can still advertise coming soon.
That's true.
So we're just talking about that we can't have a, an actual reservation with someone coming onto the property while that application is pending.
I can be at the station, and somebody's gonna say, I'm sorry, I'm gonna react, well, come on in my ass there. I'm still waiting on my rental, I'm still trying to get my S T R passed through, come on over, that's not a reservation, that's just, you just did some business.
I think the intent here is that you should not conduct any S T R business before you get a permit.
Which means really, my view, it's money changing hands, and you're gonna give them access. That doesn't occur, and if, and if you can't do it, and it's your loss, if you're standing there and you're ready to take a check, and you haven't gotten approved at that time, you stand there, too bad. You gotta take the risk.
Why make it host guests, something like that?
So hosty or.
So in this case, that would be violation?
Sure.
Host guest or.
It's a transaction, it's a transaction, if the train cannot conduct a transaction to actually rent it, until it's been approved.
Six, nine months in advance.
Well, that's fine, they can book it, but they don't give you any money.
Yeah.
Well, you know, that, that, you can't do that then, if the money's changing hands.
That's one, because that's how all the Airbnb protocols work, if I wanna make a venture in Florida for November, I'm gonna pay today.
You have to earn some money now, I understand, because then people could be, you'd be losing time because people backing out at the last minute, so.
I agree with the spirit of this, that we should not allow business to be conducted while a permit is pending. I mean, they don't even have permission yet, they're not permitted to conduct a business there. Pretty straightforward.
There's already a business going on for twenty years, like they called in, she's exempt.
We, we put new in, the word news.
And I, I wanna be sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, this is in regards to new permits for another S T R besides what is already existing.
Right, any business conducted with a pending new S T R permits.
Nobody has to go into suspend mode.
No, we've already agreed.
That's not our intent here at all.
So, so just clarification though, however this is passed, isn't pretty much every permit that's going to come in front of you new? Or, or you were just assuming that all the established short-term rentals as of today are sort of new, but not?
Yeah, no, it's a good point, it's a good point.
The application form should have your, the date you started business on it.
Right, we could ask, maybe we could add language excluding existing S T Rs at the time of the adoption of this amendment.
That's fair enough.
Yeah, just clarification.
What do you guys think?
That sounds good, I would put that sentence in there right after that, just to make sure there are copies.
And then you guys will have a list of those grandfathered in.
So can we add that exclusion at the end?
Lisa has a question, Tom.
Okay, can I finish?
I feel like.
She started.
Again, the word business is extremely broad, especially from a legality standpoint. And if, if someone who rents from their property is not allowed to take money or advertise, there's the potential of them losing out on an entire season. Could it be that there's just somebody not allowed to stay there until the permit?
Occupancy cannot occur or something of that thing.
I don't think that's right, that you're taking away somebody's absolute to advertise, to book their property the whole bit, just over one word, it's the occupancy that the permit covers, it's not too long.
Maybe that's the key, you know, in a, in a building, a new house, you have to have a certificate of occupancy before you can move in and camp in.
Right.
And Jim, I had to interject here just briefly, but I, I come from ranching and farming where I come from.
Where?
We have hay, and we have cattle on my property. We sell hay before we grow it, we sell, we plan to sell cattle before the board.
Right.
We stud things, right, we're, we're selling things that ain't even here yet.
I think we're.
I really don't think that the government is stepping in here and telling people they can't take reservations and do these kind of things. I'd like to be quiet off, we just spent the last hour doing your homework with paragraphs, commas, and semicolons.
Yeah.
People are taking, there's nothing in this document that, that respects my rights to private property. Pre-conference, appear in person, appear in person, appear in person, meet, review, schedule, research, verify, notify, site tour. What am I, what am I, gas station, you're doing a site tour? This is Gestapo-y, you're, you're taking a list of named agents, does every farm turn rental? May I stand, sir, to address you commissioners? I respect the work you've done here, I've written laws, we've watched over a hundred businesses in the last year across America. I don't own S T R, I've never worked with S T Rs. But to see this paper and four documents insult the private rights that their flag gives me, the right of possession, the right of property, the right to derive income, the right to kick you off of it, the right to invite you to it. I can no longer stay here because I have work to do, I have to spend money on a septic and a well and pay your buildings. I have a title, I have land, I don't have an S T R, but I'm not gonna sit here while you guys write pretty paragraphs and tell me that you're doing me a favor, taking a fee, I respect you commissioners, but I have work to do. And this, this is, you're stealing private rights, what you're doing is all it's pretty, with semicolons and commas and paragraphs, fees, site tours? What you come with me to do? Site tours, you gonna come inspect my house, are you gonna inspect the cattle ranch, the long-term renters? Where's the equality behind that flag? I don't even own one, but I'm furious, Jackie, thank you for your work, I'm here because you and Caleb work so hard. Thank you so much, your assessment's awesome, thank you very much, I can't listen to this, God bless America.
You're not willing to hear a response, as I understand.
Sir, you did not even have this document posted today. This document is not even finished, it's not even correct grammatically, and we're all sitting here as citizens trying to fix our grammatical errors. I, I'm insulted, I, God bless America.
Thank you. I agree with that personally, and, and this whole process of talking about it is trying to do exactly that, because we don't wanna say the wrong thing and, and exclude somebody's right, like Lucas respectfully brought up, why can't I advertise? We all agree, you can.
No, we don't.
Please.
No, I'm not saying.
You did say.
Let me, let me, the concept, all right, let me go back, and I'll restate it. The bottom line is, we're trying to do things that respect people's property rights, period. And their, and the constitutional rights do things as well. So my point is, we don't have to nitpick the periods and commas, I agree with that. But because we're, have the ability, we're here now, and we see it as it occurs, I don't have a problem if that, where he was hung up. But we sure don't wanna be infringing on the right to do business, and we're trying to figure out how to do that the best way we can, is all my point. And so, Tom had a good point, I wish he'd have hung around, I understand why he gets frustrated, because it is frustrating. You ought to be on this side of the table sometimes, so it, we, but we got to go through this and make sure we're not doing something that would, would be detrimental to the business owners and the citizens and, and the government here as well, so. So let's go, let's keep the ball rolling.
I added the words, the last sentence, in existence at the time of the adoption of this zoning resolution amendment. We can argue the rest of it, I'm just telling.
Yeah, that was going backward, that way.
Yeah.
Go forward now, Lisa, you were making a point about what, before we got?
Well, I, I think that it needs to be clarified that really and truly the whole purpose of the permit is occupancy in your home. And the way you guys have it worded, you're trying to control everything up until the occupancy takes place, and that's not okay.
I respectfully disagree, I think we're trying to control everything until the permit has been approved.
But nothing is taking place if there is no occupancy.
I disagree with that. Lucas just said, you're gonna have to transfer money at the time you make a reservation, a reservation, right?
But if there is no occupancy, then that deposit, as long as it's within a certain timeframe, is refunded.
That's a S T R owner and a platform, a hosting platforms agreement, right? We're not always.
The money doesn't go to the host until a reservation has been completed.
Understood.
So that money has not been transacted to us as hosts.
So do they hold it until when they come into the occupancy, is that how it works?
Yes, sir, it's not until twenty-four hours after the reservation, that they show up until it's released.
Okay, so that, it doesn't, just all they do is hold it, it's like a credit, a debit card, they hold your money until they, they got approval.
Exactly.
I think that's where businesses can't, they're gonna lose an entire season because of your one word.
Well, that may be true, but it may not be true, they might be doing this in December for the spring season, right?
So you guys are trying to control that aspect of something, and why do you have to do that? The only thing we're concerned about is the occupancy for the permit, and you guys think you're running on rental?
If I may. I might speak to that a little bit, as we referred, we were, we just came out of a four-hour-long meeting over here next door. Because some things were not looked at beforehand or addressed beforehand, Ben. Even with everything that we're trying to figure out here, and I know sometimes it seems like it's overreached, maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But as soon as we do something, later on, we're gonna figure out something that, wow, we really should have addressed that in this document because of a situation that comes before us. It's not that we're trying to injure or hurt somebody, but just from this experience this morning, we are trying to foresee what might come along and bite us, or bite, not necessarily just us, but there are situations that come forward, and that's why we, we nitpick the commas, we nitpick the words and make sure, well, but that's a part of it, and the things that, the unforeseen things that come about, there, anything we do will have seen and unforeseen consequences.
But Kevin, I'm not talking about this in its entirety, I'm talking about one word at the very end. I'm not sitting here telling you that this whole thing that we just spent hour long going through is wrong. I'm saying one word at the very end is way too broad, and you guys are running the risk of crashing somebody's potential business.
So you make a.
That's where my issue is.
Yeah, that's why we're, we're picking words, and we're trying to get the proper words in place, that's why we're doing this.
I think he's supporting what you're saying, Lisa, but that's why we're gonna take the time to fix it, because, and agree that we don't wanna injure, we wanna do that, and because I, the real problem was, we had a case where somebody already was having people actually show up, and then we're still building a thing, and they were gonna go ahead and take pictures and do stuff on their place and collect money, and, and it was, that was what we're trying to avoid, something to that effect. Which I think it, the way you're describing the process, you can, you can go out and advertise, nobody's, that's, and, and nobody's taking occupancy, and nobody's out there using that new facility, because it didn't build yet. And if it weren't built in time, then it's your risk.
Right.
So, so that's fair, so how do we do that, is, is the issue, and we, and we wanna make sure we will kinda count for those issues where it may be an illegal move by getting in there, because now it's not a complete structure.
I'd like to address that, please.
Go ahead.
Blue River, Aspen, Bayonne, Colorado Springs, Denver, there's not a state you can look at, except for forty-three states, that allow S T Rs, seven states don't even allow, you can't even have an S T R in Miami, you can't have one in Florida. All of the states, seven states don't allow it, they just don't allow it. These individuals have looked at that, and they're trying to get a handle on what's coming, because all these, all these cities, look at that, Google, have had issues with S T Rs, and they're having to go back years later to start straightening out things that they didn't straighten out first place. Issue, just trying to get it right in the first place, yes, it's, it's a process, it's tedious, it's ridiculous in some ways, but you've gotta get a handle on it. Otherwise, you're gonna be like, Bayonne's got nineteen seventy-seven S T Rs, they don't even know that, they think they have three thousand. They have no clue what they have, they've been in process of working for many years. So the issue you've got in here is you've got individuals, not you individuals, you're, you're taking care of your S T Rs, but there's people that don't. There's people that are out there doing things they shouldn't be doing. It's the way the world works, it's the way that human beings work, they try to get away with things, we're trying to cover some things. Not the people, it's not the ninety-eight percent of people that, that do things right, it's the two percent that try to get away with things. That's what causes the issues with the other ninety-eight percent.
But if they're not gonna do something right, they're not gonna be following that regardless.
But we gotta shut them down, that's the whole thing, they will be found out very quickly now.
But that, that's.
But we're talking about people who are doing something right and in this shop, like they're like, they're capacity, what they can do. We're not talking about the people who aren't gonna follow this at all.
Maybe they're even in a life business, if they're not following.
So, so let's figure out, we, I think, I think we all agree that concept here, let's get the right process of the words. Debbie, you got something to add to that?
Yes, I do, I'm sick and tired of hearing us that we're compared to Austin, or Pittkin, or Chaffey, because we will never be all those places you mentioned, never, let me finish. No, no, I totally understand. I totally understand your desire to have a knowledge of what's going on in this county. But I think the process from the start was a little mishandled. And as I, I mentioned, if you could start with an understanding of what the market is, have a simple registration process, because we're talking about all the prices that are already doing business. Granted, it's different for new, but right now, at this moment in time, it's all the places that are already established. So by having a simple registration process for the county to understand where are the short-term rentals? How many nights are they granted out per year? Is it once a year? Is it five times a month? Just to have an understanding of what we have. And then reevaluate it, I think, I'm very, I don't have a short-term mind goal, so there's no skin off my nose, but I can see that you've really put a lot into this. It's still a lot of government overreach. If you just had an understanding of what the market is, start with a simple registration process and then six months from now or next year, then you have a better idea. But to, to attack 70 property owners that have short-term rentals, it just seems you're putting, you're creating a problem without knowing what the issue really is.
Okay, thanks for the comment. But wait, wait a minute. I object to a couple of things. We are trying to make it simple and this has changed a lot over the last, the first document.
It has.
And we understand that. And, and nobody's, you know, nobody's attacking the 70 owners here. The 70 owners are grandfathered in, if you want to call it that. We're not, and we're not gonna ask you to go back and modify things other than, than make sure your septic system's legal, that's it. So I think we're trying to be specific so that, that we're, it sounds worried, but we're not gonna go out, nobody's going out there and, and getting into the homes and doing anything, period. The site tours that we're talking about are to make sure that, that what, they're complying with what they signed up to do, just like you do with a building permit on a house. You get a guy coming in there and inspecting the code and make sure you, you got your electric all wired in. And in this case, the septic systems, that all, that happens too. Goes in there, here's, here's the infiltrators, here's the septic tank, here's the number of bedrooms. And Jackie has to certify that they were met. And that's all we're trying to do here, is to make sure there's a sign posted that says, here's the owner, here's the stuff for the fire engine to come up to, they can find the address, et cetera, to protect the people that are renting it with, just like we want to protect the landowners that are living in a residence. So that's our model, is to try to keep it that simple. And then we gotta address the, where, where do they break the rules? At some point, you gotta know that. You know, it's easy when somebody's out there, and we've had this happen on buildings, people start camping in their house before the occupancy certificate gets granted and then that, and this camping turns into three years of fixing the house. So we're trying to avoid those kinds of things. So I like what I was hearing over here and, and I know that Lucas was putting some thought into it on, and so was Lisa, on how do you, how do you, where do you draw the line where it actually breaks the rule?
I was like, no paid STR rentals may be fulfilled, then go on when there's a pending, a new pending.
Say again, loudly.
Pay STR rentals may be fulfilled.
No paid STR.
Prior, when there's a new pending.
He's referring to nine or 10.
Instead of business, because business is too big.
Well, I know, or that's what we're, we're talking to Charlie.
It's because I'm trying to give you some language. Instead of business, which is bought as the biggest bar in the county.
Charlie, the problem is, we couldn't clearly hear what your suggestion was.
Right.
Pay, that's no, okay, short-term rental may be fulfilled.
So STR contract, right?
Maybe, in other words, so you can't take the money and have someone show up when you have a pending avenue.
And that would allow advertising to occur ahead of time.
Yeah, that would allow the advertiser...
Come in and work in the house and stay the night.
Yeah, so what do you think?
I think it puts it too late in the process. Because if they start allowing somebody to come in and take the money then, or at the last minute, I don't even know how we find out about it until it's actually already happened. If you pull the permit, but we need to remind owners ahead of time that you should not, I don't have a problem with them advertising, taking deposits if they want to. But I think the order has to be directed toward the, the property owner or the agent handling it for them to make sure that there's not any activity related to the short-term rental, actual occupancy.
Making the actual occupancy, that's right. Driving out, driving in the driveway.
So maybe you need to say that in, uh, 9.10.3C, applicant for a short-term rental permit shall, maybe you need to let them know that statement that Charlie just said. So they know upfront that they can't do anything until they have the permit. Uh, page three, page three C.
Page three C has the applicant for an STR permit shall.
Shall, and so whatever Charlie just said about...
Joe, say it again loudly, Charlie.
No paid for a rental may be fulfilled prior to...
Shall, the applicant shall not, you gotta, you gotta put it in terms of what?
The applicant shall not allow occupancy. Well, as long as I don't want occupancy, I've had painters come down and work for a week.
But it's a rental.
That's not, that's not occupancy.
Reservation occupancy.
Yeah, reservation occupancy, res, rental occupancy. You gotta do work, people can stay overnight, wiring the thing or whatever.
But the words are still, can be misconstrued under other things.
That's why it should be reservation based. Or occupancy by a reservation.
Reservation occupancy.
It's an STR.
Yeah, that, maybe that handles it. You cannot, can't rent your place.
Exactly.
Okay, so let's come, so that goes in the section C, we were over on...
Well, it would have to go under 910.6 as part of the violation.
Yeah, we're dealing with violations.
But we got something to violate, Charlie's got a good point, we still have to fix C.
So no occupancy related to a reservation shall not be allowed or...
Hearing up the pending application.
You've got it under 30 days.
Yeah, so the applicant for an STR permit shall not allow, or shall, an applicant shall not something.
Shall not commence.
Shall not?
Commence until permit has been issued.
No, to put it in terms, the applicant, this is an action that the applicant's doing. You've got to ensure, you must ensure that you will not rent this until it's been what? You know?
Fully permitted.
Fully permitted or...
Yeah, not host a reservation during a pending application.
There you go, that's probably the best...
How about no...
She said three times.
STR reservation.
After we get it.
Right, that's where I was getting at, no rental occupancy shall occur while a pending new permit is in the process.
I think you need to take care of that short-term.
I tried, yeah.
So, so get it back to the app, this is an action on you, the applicant for an STR, you shall not, you, you shall ensure that the facility will not be occupied until... Go back to the...
They won't sleep in their bed. Don't sleep in your bed.
Or floor, so Fred's got a question.
Shall not be occupied by a paying client.
STR. An STR, so ensure that the S, the proposed STR will not be...
Occupied by a paying client until a permit has been issued by the...
Okay, so that, that sets it, the rule, and then the...
A paying client, very specifically. Client is somebody who gives you money in exchange for a service or product.
Or a reservation cannot be honored until, maybe that's a little better.
Yeah, I think you may have a problem there. Let's say we've got a 60 to 90 waiting for these things to process. And my solution as a property owner is to rent it for three months. And it's not a short-term rental now, I've covered it by this at all, but I've got somebody paying in the property. And then when I get my permit, I'm entered short-term. So you don't want to preclude...
Yeah, you can...
That I have an opportunity for someone to rent it for...
Right, that's why...
And that's why we added short-term rental, it only applies to...
That's right, that's correct.
So I had written, Charlie, no STR rental occupancy shall occur...
Prior to...
With a pending new STR permit.
That'll work.
I, I don't really like the word with a pending, but it should be while a new STR is pending.
Yes.
So I'll change that rule there, but...
So is this getting added back on page three under C? Or is this going to be under, on page four where we were at?
It has to be under C because you have to ensure that you don't do anything and then the, the second page is the pending part.
I think, because I think under C, you're talking what the applicant for the STR is, what their responsibilities are to, in regards to acquiring the permit. And now, I think that what we're speaking of here actually does fall under 9.10.6.
Yeah, that's a good point, because this is, you're right.
Uh, I don't think it needs to be back under C.
I would agree, I agree, dealing really with violations in the pending section of this STR. I haven't written, no STR rental occupancy shall occur while a new STR permit application is pending.
Yeah, I agree.
Which would be a, or which will be a violation of this resolution.
Resultant of violation. Lisa?
I just have a question. I'm just curious why the county cares so much about short-term rentals but doesn't care about long-term rentals? And I'm not saying you should, I just want to know why this has become such an issue when, to kind of talk about what the gentleman said, sure. There's numerous states that don't have short-term rental permits because they don't care to get involved in it.
Okay.
Now, they don't allow it. You don't allow it.
Let me, Lisa, you weren't here when we made a statement and then Tom's got a point to make. The problem is, that has happened, there's 20 some odd people that have, are abusing the septic systems and they're creating a hazard because they are overloading what they've got. Yeah, 2029th, or whatever it was. And so there is an issue with abusing the ability of what it's, a short-term rental is. And, and we wanted to make sure that we had an accountability and the other safety from a fire code or fire wildfire, we gotta notify people to get the people that are renting out. Long-term rentals, you, you have, you know, they're here, they're, they're listed. In fact, occupying a res, as a resident. You having trouble with?
You're ready.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, so we have an issue with abuse of the septic systems, okay? They get too many people for the number, and they advertise beds that are absurd, 10, 10 in a three-bedroom or two, two-bedroom house. That's one issue. The other issue is to know who's there and how to get ahold of them because they turn quickly. And so that's, we're putting the burden on the owner of the STR to post a notice so that it can, the phone numbers are there as well as that person's responsible to get, to be gotten ahold of 20, you know, the issue went through with the 24 hours, be able to answer the phone. That's how we got into this in the first place. And, and then the issue of making sure they conform to the zoning and the water issues that, you know, that are there for every resident, that was all. It got it started.
Can I, can I ask a question, please?
Let me...
No, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Pete Brookmeyer. We started a short-term rental about a year ago. My wife spoke earlier, I appreciate, I spoke to, I believe, Mr. Flower yesterday. I appreciate the time you gave me on the phone. We've had a good experience, I've put the property in an LLC. I've purchased renter insurance with several million dollars of liability coverage. I know that had come up. If anyone has any questions about insurance, please feel free to reach out to me. You do not want to simply use homeowner's insurance policy because oftentimes that is not covered, you know, it took me a long time to find the proper insurance. The question I had is, in other counties where they've had a regulation, there's been basically no enforcement. And then what you have is a, a black market. Like in Leadville, for example, they had a much simpler permitting process and less than 50% of the properties complied initially. I don't know what's happened now. So is there some kind of enforcement? Or if it's just, because otherwise you're going to have a, a significant black market, in my opinion. I just wanted to make a quick, a quick question about the septic stuff. I, I just was unfortunately in that situation. I did not know what our house was permitted through and it was misrepresented when we purchased it and we'll see if, if I'm gonna do anything about that. But the problem is, you know, our house on average has about two people in it. Occasionally, there might be one over the limit. So is there a way that they could do, look at the occupancy rather than the absolute maximum? So those are my two thoughts, the, the, the septic issue and number two, the, the issue about how do you enforce this? And I guess the third question is, i- if, if one of the impetuses for this were concerns about overloading septic systems, are you going, is there going to then be regulation or inspections of all the other homeowners to make sure they are not doing the same thing? Thank you very much.
Okay, you want to take that?
No.
Tom's got it, let's get him.
Thank you, sir. Some, I want to share a couple of thoughts, we're digressing a little bit here, but I think you guys deserve this. So, this is my opinion. We're trying to put the dots in, the periods in, the semicolons. I understand we're sitting here doing clerical work while you people are away from your regular daily activity. My intent for that was so that we have this document, if we are in agreement, one way or the other, let's say it's for approval, that we could approve this document and be done with it. If we approve this document and there's a bunch of changes to be made, I will not vote to approve it. I'm not gonna vote to approve something that may or may not get done. So I apologize for that to some degree. But my hope was that when we were through here today, we got down to the second item on our agenda, which is to consider adoption of this document. So this outwork by this gentleman, he's certainly well within his rights. I would have liked to have been able to address his concerns. I think there's a couple of things we've got to keep in mind here. Not everybody in this county is going to use a hosting platform. My neighbors are renting their place right now. Is that a problem? Yes, it's a problem. I think, Lisa, this is part of the answer I would have given to one of your questions. The reason we care about this is because this county voted to assess a 2% lodging tax, including short-term rentals. So that's one of the reasons. The other reason, this is again, my personal opinion, is back to, uh, what one of the planning commissioners members said, so that we don't get overrun and wake up one day and have five times as many people in here screaming at us because now this valley is out of control. Now whether STR, they're gonna make it that way or not, I don't know that. But that's one of my concerns personally, that we can get a grip on this while it's still manageable. The other thing I would say, and I said this all along, this is not about trying to prevent short-term rentals from existing in this county. This is trying to find a reasonable, well-thought-out document that will allow those short-term rentals to exist within the planning or the zoning resolution, which is really the governing document of this county of land use. Now this is a land use issue, there's no two ways about that. But the minute anybody decides to operate... But the minute anybody decides to operate a short term rental, then they automatically assume that what happens to long term rentals is none of their business. It has no part of this conversation. If you want to rent your place for over thirty days, then this has nothing to do with you. And it has nothing to do with us. I don't like it, but that's the facts. We don't regulate long term rentals. We're trying to regulate short term rentals. And I would tell this gentleman, point blank. We are not interested. We are not interested in government overreach. In my opinion, government overreach is excessive hands on by the government.
And some people come here.
I'm tired of government overreach statement being thrown in our faces. We're trying to develop a regulatory document. If you don't want to be regulated in the unincorporated portions of the county, don't try to open a business. We wouldn't be doing our jobs if we weren't trying to do this. Because we'd have businesses all over this county in direct opposition to the zoning resolution. If you want to have a business in this county, get ready because you're going to have to go through the zoning resolution and find a variance to that. It's pretty simple to me. Now, we're way in the weeds, but I'm telling you. Sit here and have lawsuit after lawsuit threatened against you because something wasn't spelled out in a document. And that's where we're at. And they're trying to hang us on every little thing that somebody prior to us typically didn't think through. And so I would submit to you, that's all the planning commission has done. That's all we're trying to do. I'm not interested in government overreach. But you subject yourself to regulations the minute you decide you want to open a business in this county. There's part of this that enters into the equation. We've never really had this consideration that infuriates me about our process. And that goes back to who's going to monitor this? Who's going to make these assessments? Who's going to? Here's the general concept. The only way this county is going to know if there's an S T R is either we check to see what's being advertised on a hosting platform, which is okay. Here's the thing that infuriates me. Or we wait until we have a neighbor telling on a neighbor. Hey commissioners, hey Jackie, this guy's running a short term. That is the sorriest way to run a county that I could imagine when we're trying to turn neighbor against neighbor. Unfortunately, the state statutes, which were lobbied heavily by the short term rental industry, says this person sitting to my right is the only person in this county that is privileged to receive that information about short term rentals. The only other way we know about short term rentals is we base the amount of tax dollars that we get. This year it was fifty two, fifty four thousand. Fifty five thousand dollars. That's all we're privileged to. They do report to the county clerk, but by law she can't share that information. Now you tell me that's not lobbying at the state legislature. How can we effectively manage anything in this county when we really don't know what's going on? We can't force you to tell us how much tax. We can't ask her who's paying their taxes, who's not. She cannot share that. And so we sit here partially with our hands tied about some things. I just, I get frustrated. How can we manage our county if we don't have all the resources? There's no way to document the amount of revenue coming to this county connected to short term rentals other than specifically that two percent tax money. That's it. It's all we have to work on. So everything else is either we trust you or we check up on you on a hosting platform, or we wait till your neighbor turns you in for renting your place. And that's a sorry way to do business. So.
But it's real. And let me tag on to that a little bit. That's why it's important to make, from my point of view, it's about the safety and the sanity and the sanitary issues that we have with you, with those. And those are brought to our attention, the ways Tom had just said. So, uh, could be brought to.
Yeah, no guarantee.
Yeah. And so that's okay, in my view, because government overreach is walking around with a couple of police dogs and a, and a couple deputies. We aren't going to do that. We never have and we will not. My will not. He subscribed to that. So, but we don't want to have it get out of hand. And so the only thing we've been asking for is a registration of those items. And we're not charging exorbitant fees. We're not going to.
We have no idea.
We won't, we don't know that yet, but we've been discussing possible things. Uh, we have no intent to make it unrealistic. And so we're, we're taking it a step at a time. And it, and it's very good to get a handle on how many we have. But, but the beauty is the density, and we're going to get to density later, but the conformance is a land use issue, which we've got our zoning and the water that controls that. So that's a good news thing that Vale and Aspen and all this other stuff, it's irrelevant to talk about how they got in the jam they did. Well, we've got some control on it. But we need to understand how they're being used. So we got the revenue that advantages us all and the ability to have businesses grow. So we need to get to that. And so I would like to finish this process. So.
And to that end, can I read what I have?
Yeah.
And then go ahead and take, take that comment.
Debbie, go ahead first.
Well, I just have a question because what has come up numerous times during this whole proceeding is about, you know, A T Vs or parties or whatever. Does the good neighbor policy address that?
Yes.
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 Okay. And then just an FYI, I had a nice conversation with the sheriff. And he said he had one short term rental complaint. And I said, was that for the whole year? And he said, no, that's for the whole time.
Existence.
The whole existence, he said, one complaint. And the big problem is the break ins of the vacant houses. That's, that's an issue that the sheriff has.
And to your point, if I may, sir. People said, why are you trying to address a problem that doesn't exist? Well, I can tell you why. We're not doing this in response to a bunch of violations from S T Rs. Has nothing to do with it. Whether there's one or eighty, it doesn't matter. It never came into this conversation about trying to get this document put together. Nine, ten, six, A. This is what I had written down based on our conversations. No S T R rental occupancy shall occur while a new S T R permit application is pending. Or that will be a violation of this resolution and so shall result in termination of the S T R application process, excluding S T Rs in existence at the time of the adoption of this zoning resolution amendment. Is that satisfactory, Charlie? You brought it up. I would ask you.
Yes.
Okay. At least we can move on.
Any other questions on that or comments? I hope not.
I have a comment, um, if I could.
Who's this?
This is Karen Sund with Three Peaks Ranch. So, I mean, correct me if I'm misunderstanding this, but earlier I heard you guys reading that you were going to have in there that says you won't be able to honor existing reservations while you're applying for the.
Just corrected that.
Corrected that. You cut out, but that was, that was a discussion only. We, we, we went round and around on how to get to the point where you can do that. And yet, uh, and that's how we evolved into the occupancy point that Tom wrote in.
And I did change it to say S T R permit application is pending or said action will be a violation. Now, does that, how does that set in the back? Ms. Lisa? I know I'm interrupting you, but I said, how does that language set with you guys?
I think it sounds good.
It's more reading.
And I appreciate you guys giving that consideration.
And the only question I would have is, is, is the word new necessary? Because it's an application for an S T R. I don't think the word new is relevant.
I don't think the word new is.
Because you got your grandfather. I, I.
When we've specified occupancy, then I think you're right. Probably doesn't matter whether it's new or.
That's right. Doesn't matter.
So I will take out while, I'll take out new and it would read while and S T R, correct?
Because you got different kinds there. Either modify it or it's a new one or it's a.
Yeah, there's some argument about A or and before the letter S.
That's not.
While A.
If you've already covered it, I'm going to cut you off.
I'm just wondering, we are in the twenty first century. If, uh, the application process is, you know, it's in person, in person, in person. Can some of the application process be done online or by phone or by email? Or you must have a physical presence, physical presence.
And the reason is we don't let them hang in there, Jackie. What's the reason?
Reason is that we have a, uh, we have a person as an advocate has have a pre-conference with the chairperson and myself. And then we would tell them, hey, you're writing this for eight. You only have this experience.
They are lousy.
But that can be done, um, like with a Zoom call? I mean, it has to be.
I guess Debbie, if you want to make arrangements from our office and do it, we, we will. But I think that's hitting in the weeds.
To do what?
No, no, I'm only bringing it up because in the, in the resolution, it said person, in person, in person.
Correct. But we make accommodations for people who can't read.
Okay.
We make accommodations for people who can't hear. We make accommodations for people who can't come in our office. We go out to their car. So, no, that's.
Okay. No, I'm clarifying because it was only person, but really there's a whole wiggle room you have.
Yeah, everything's very.
So are we putting a gray word in there that says we're just going to stay in person and then let you deal with it if they have excuses not to show up?
Exactly. Okay. Thank you.
This is Karen Sund again. Sorry, my phone died. Could I, could I comment on one thing?
Go ahead, Karen. You've been trying. Are you, are you on a good line now?
Yeah, sorry, my, my phone died. So I just want to clarify one thing. Our, I, earlier I heard you guys say that you're going to not be able to honor any existing reservations on short term rentals while you're applying for the permit. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
What we came up with was you can go ahead and do that, but you cannot actually occupy and honor the, uh, transaction until it is permitted. Meaning they can't come in and you can go get them lined up and you have them lined up for miles. But if your short term, uh, construction is not completed, you can't bring them in.
So what about those of us who already have the next two months booked? And it's going to take two months to apply. So we can't honor them.
That's the problem. The issue is though, it's going to be a thirty day window.
No, Karen's already grandfathered it.
Existing, you're going to apply to existing S T Rs.
I thought she was making it a generic one. If it exists already, do you exist already?
Yes, they exist already.
So nobody's asking you to reapply.
You are allowed to continue with the, your existing, uh,
Business.
Business while going through the application process if you already have an existing S T R.
Gotcha. Okay, okay. That's great. Thank you.
Okay. And we, we, we understood that when you, uh, phone died earlier, but thanks. Okay, are we good to go forward yet? Oh, and it's Lisa. Not one word.
I'm just curious how you guys are going to know who's grandfathered in and who's not.
Jackie.
We got a list. Been working on this document for over a year and a half now, Lisa. Do you have an S T R or, okay.
But I manage properties.
You manage properties. So we have a list. And, uh, neighbors tell my neighbors all the time. So we have a huge list of who's been calling in and commenting and who is on the V R B O.
Okay, I get that. But just like Tom just said, there's people who don't use those.
I get it. Don't say we, if you come in, I'm not going to call you a liar. If you come in and say, hey, I've had an S T R for a year now, I'm not going to say, no, you haven't. You just started it. I'm going to take anybody who works.
If others are found because they've been not informed because of whatever, as a matter of fact, maybe even informing people that we've got a new resolution. We could even.
But no.
That's where I was going with you.
Now, because we, we do a lot of things, like you have to pay use tax on all your building materials. They build a new home. If you come in and say, I bought all my building materials in Westwood or I paid at least four point nine percent sales tax, I'll say, no, no, you didn't. You know, you got to show some receipts, but we're not going to sit there and call someone a liar. That's not our job. Our job is if you feel, uh, right to come in and say, I had this in existence, we're not going to question you.
You start from there and move forward, right?
So, so I think you bring up a great point and I think we ought to grab a hold of it. I think once this resolution is approved, you can go out and advertise it and say, look, everybody, the public, and we, we can make a big deal about it. Get your permit applied for. If you currently got an S T R, there's no issue. Just come in and, and get registered. Uh, and that way they'll, they'll be feeling obligated to do it because in the future you could be fine if something else came up, like you were trying to hide it.
Sure. And I just wanted to know how that was being.
Yeah. So that's a, a good way to go. Thanks.
Enough that that list is comprehensive. We understand that, but we have to start somewhere.
But we don't, we don't judge. You're the one that has to go meet your maker. You want to come in and lie about it? Um, on the county website, you have a list of, uh, home occupied, uh, businesses. Will you be doing the same for short term rentals? We could. I don't know why not. I think that, uh, that would probably be up to the county commissioner, seeing as they decide what goes on my website.
But that's a good point. It can be and.
No, I just noticed that you have the home occupied, so I was just.
Can we move on with C? It's the last one.
Let's go on. Are we at C?
C, last page.
Okay, uh, the last page. Page four on C is an S T R permit granted pursuant to the, this section may be suspended or revoked by the B O C C during a public meeting after determining that a violation has occurred.
I think it should be suspended, modified, or revoked.
Because that's where we were with everything. Modified.
Suspended, comma, modified, or revoked.
Okay.
And then only one period after that and then a period after B.
Speaking of periods, we're going to be consistent.
This is, we have our documented.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that, no, I'm sorry. I would recommend to the board that we do strike. It's already been struck, but it was left in there so we could have discussion about it today. I would recommend that we take out any reference to density.
For here.
Yeah. Same here.
Gentlemen.
And I would concur with that.
Okay.
I am good with that.
We've had that discussion. This is not a, uh, thought that we put a lot of thought in. I had it. And that is the way it should be handled.
And Mr. Chairman?
Let Kevin speak.
Okay, I didn't.
Just, just a comment to tag on the end of that. I mean, and I think I made this comment during our work session. If it becomes a problem to where we need to look at that in the future, there's nothing that precludes us from.
Yeah, we can always look at the problems and change and revise.
I think.
Perfect suggestion.
I would throw the caveat to that, sir. This, in my opinion, we've revised and amended our zoning resolution twice since I've been a commissioner. That is a long drawn out lengthy process. That's the other reason we're trying to get as many bases as we can cover now. If we turn around in two weeks and have to change a couple of words in here, guess what? We got to go through everything. The public area, the notices. Planning commission has to give thirty days notice. So I, I would just beg your indulgence. We're trying to get it right.
I think you just sign this so I can get it printed.
Got a question here.
A couple of questions. I heard density mentioned by, by yourself, by this gentleman over here. How is this on existing short term rentals? How is this going to affect density?
Your grandfather and when? We're taking density out, right? We're not gonna, we're not, what's controlling the density is the. Yeah, we're taking density out, right, we're not gonna, we're not, what's controlling the density is the current land use zoning rule. It's one residential residence or residential business per parcel.
So, existing short-term rentals without being required to go through the relevant process?
They're already.
Now answer the question specifically.
The question is, they are, you gotta, you gotta plot, you gotta put your name on a piece of paper and, and get the stuff conforming here, make sure.
You have to go through the permitting process, everybody's gonna have to do that.
But you're.
Then what's grandfathered?
There, that's why I said, we've desperately tried not to use the word grandfathered, because it has all kinds of connotations. Everybody's gonna be subject to this amendment. There are things that we're gonna allow existing short-term rentals to do that we wouldn't allow a new.
Right.
STR to do. Because we recognize that you're already in business, we're not gonna hold you to these 30-day thing. You can continue to function as an STR. And parallel to that, get your business permitted.
Right.
Okay, a new business couldn't do that, we've already decided that. Or we've already put that language in here, but if you're an existing STR, you can continue to operate. And you need to get your business permitted.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Good, okay. So, you said that when a person wants to do an STR, you have to realize he's going into business and do the proper thing. Twenty-two years ago, we built bunkhouses, we spent over a hundred thousand dollars for the express purpose of short-term rentals. Zoning told us exactly everything we have to do, we did it exactly as they said.
Right.
Now, you're saying bunkhouses cannot have short-term rentals.
Correct.
What am I supposed to do about that hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars we spent with zoning's blessing?
So, did you build your bunkhouse on what property? What's the address?
920 County Route 124.
124. Because I answered an email, uh, because you had a special use permit on your bed and breath that you no longer own.
Yeah, that has nothing.
Okay, so a bunkhouse cannot have a kitchen.
We don't have a kitchen.
Okay, so I have your, that's another, something I wanted to bring up. So you come in and you apply for a short-term rental. The first thing I'm gonna look at is your file to make sure that what you have is, uh, like if you say, I'm renting my house for 80 people, but you only have four bedroom septic. Then you're gonna have to upgrade your septic, or you're also going to have to, um, cut your rentals down.
Okay.
Okay, you're saying that you, uh, have got permission from the planning and zoning office to, uh, build a bunkhouse, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so in your file, cause I, you have a shed, a garage. What's this one? You have no bunkhouse permits, you have shed permits.
No.
Accessory structures.
No.
So when you come in to apply for your, uh, short-term rental, if you have any permits that maybe are not in here, uh, I'll need to have them also.
So you're saying, when the zoning officer came out to our place, when you were inquiring about this, he didn't require us to have a permit to build the bunkhouses?
Did, I have accessory permits, but you're saying that you got a bunkhouse permit?
Well, a necessary building, whatever you wanna call it.
Okay, so there's actually an accessory building and then there's a bunkhouse.
There's a difference.
There's a difference.
Well, we, we were required to put in a whole new septic system for guests, for our bunkhouse. That wouldn't be an accessory building, that's for a bunkhouse.
Okay, so then we.
Two bedrooms?
So we'll clean up your.
Okay, so let me, let me stop.
So we'll clean up your file when you get in, when you get in the office.
Yeah.
That's why I'm just saying that that's part of the process.
Right.
Now, uh, here's something else that came to mind, I mean, let me talk about Lake Dewey's real quick. Lake Dewey's has deed restrictions on their deeds that you cannot grant out their property, the buildings. So that would be denied. If you had a short-term rental.
Or not in Lake Dewey's.
Yeah, but I'm just throwing that out there.
You're saying that for the general public's knowledge, you're not saying you are.
So let me, let me stop this for a second, because Jackie brought up two good points, and so did you. You have an accessory building that was required to have a septic system, that's a special circumstance. He's gonna look at it, you've been called, you've been short-term leasinging already. So that's an issue that, that we call, quote, grandfathered, it's not, you're gonna go in and you're gonna re-apply and go through the process to make sure it's meeting the requirements, that's all that is required. Just a second, Lucas. And, and we're gonna do that with each one of these people, uh, these short-term rentals that we are aware of. Make sure that we'll help you through that process, that's what she's intending to do. Now, if, that doesn't mean you wanna run up against something, if you wanna rent more, like she said, have more people, then you may have to modify that septic system or reduce the rental. But that, that, that's where we are, okay? And so, rather than, we don't wanna take it one at a time in this meeting, but that's what'll occur here. And then if there's a requirement to come before the BOCC for another look and grant a special use or a variance or whatever it is termed at that time, we'll consider a stand. So Lucas has a question.
So Lucas said, so I have no, uh, no foot in the game, other than local businesses, downtown businesses, basically have to have a short-term rental, or they won't make it, especially the restaurants. But, to make all the people who are already existing short-term rentals go through this art process, process, cumbersome process, again, when they've already been doing it for some 20 years, some, whatever, five years or 10 years, I think is, 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 that, that whole document can be reduced down to a page and a half and, and maybe you need to clarify, what are the things that can get you kicked out? What are the things that are gonna be inspected? We have no building code in the county, so what are we specifically, um, inspecting for? Because otherwise, this man or, or some other person could come through the process and neighbors all of a sudden go, well, we don't want a short-term rental here, and raise a big fuss.
Let me stop you there, cause you bring a good point up, and that was the point that we're trying to make here, and Jackie is trying to do. Those are case by case, and I don't think there's any intent to have you go through and, and go through that same exact thing as a new rental, because they've already exists, and so you're gonna be looking at how that either conforms or not, and what needs to be adjusted or not, or a balance, so.
Okay, I think too, that, that, you gotta remember, and, and I'm just, I'm not saying that you don't know, but you're in a land use county. Do you, do you realize that this is a land use county? There's three of them in the United States. What you do on your property is what is, we have zoning for. You might come from, you came from Nebraska, they don't have zoning. They have building permits and they have building regulations, you don't get a building permit from the county, you get a zoning permit. We are a land use county. What you do on your property has to go through the zoning resolution.
Unless it's a resident or a farm.
Uh-huh, we are zoned agricultural and residential. Less density means one home per parcel. You have 80 acres, you get one home, have five acres, you get one home. We have setbacks and we have over height regulations, height regulations. So anything above that, you have to apply for a special use permit. So, when the short-term rentals came up, we debated, do we do a short-term rental permit? Or do we make them go through the special use permit process? So we cut it down to half of what was required. We've been working on this for a year and a half, we're not saying that, uh, anyone has to stop the short-term rentals. Some states are just saying, no more short-term rentals. Florida?
Seven states.
Seven states right now says no short-term rentals.
Okay.
So, we are trying to make it so, I don't want you renting your house next to me for 20 people, 20 college students. I don't want, we're mostly concerned about your septic system. I wanna see you, and you might think, oh, that's not bad, I only rented for a little while. Do you know how many septic's I have seen go belly up? Because they have overused it? Well, they're not gonna tell me, cause it's five or $6,000 fix. We're trying to make this regulation simple, we've cut it down, and we've cut it down. These gentlemen have had more public meetings than is necessary, because they believe that you guys have an input. So, what happens? You guys, uh, are happy with this documentation, we'll go forward. And I know that common sense is gonna play a factor. But if you're violating the zoning now, you're going to have an issue with the short-term rental. Yes, you put yourself on the radar. Mr. Seibel thinks that he has a bunkhouse permit, he does not have a bunkhouse permit. He has an accessory building permit.
An accessory building does not have a sewer or a kitchen.
Right.
Hang on, your permit does not match what you were permitted for. No, wait, wait, Mr. Seibel, but I'm not, I'm gonna sit down with Mr. Seibel and I'm gonna say, okay, let's get you permitted correctly. Then it won't be any cost, we'll just make sure that his permit says bunkhouse on it.
See, you were required to put that septic system in, even though the guy called it an accessory building, that was just a screw-up on his part.
So, let's say that, uh, Mr. Seibel has a septic, and I know he does, but he has a septic to an accessory building. So when he comes in, we're gonna sit down and we're gonna get all his permits correct. So that if Mr. Seibel wants to sell this place and somebody else wants to do it, that's a smooth transaction. It's also, we're not here to punish anyone. And we also know that we all came from COVID, but these commissioners could've said, no STRs. And then what would they have done? A year and a half, we've been working on this. Yeah, you own a business, but I have to make sure that the health and safety of Coaster County is not polluting someone else's well. Where do you live, Mr. Seibel? You live on in Westwood. You don't have to worry, roundabout, make sure that your water and your septic is clean.
I have to worry twice as much as anybody that go well now, it's just, because they can take care of that themselves, get another one by that line, I can't.
Yeah, you can't do that.
But what I'm saying is, I have to make sure that your water is safely to drink. Just because your neighbor's septic is overflowing could affect your well. It's gonna be a smooth process, and if you guys don't like it, come back in.
So are you telling me that Lake Leppenpott, the zoning officer, made a mistake?
Yes.
Okay, and now you're going to make me pay for his.
What is it, what are you paying, he's gonna work the paperwork for you?
I'm gonna do the paperwork and we're gonna get you cleaned up for free.
That, you know, all it is, is, is you've got a septic system and it's permitted. And, and you'll comply automatically, because now you've got a house, you don't have a kitchen in, you're not.
No, you're gonna be fine.
Tim, Tom's got a question.
Tim or Tom?
Timber.
Tim or Tom?
Oh, timber, Tom.
No, you said Tim and then Tom.
Oh, I did, Tom, Tom basically.
So in an effort to move forward, I'd like to go back to 9103B6.
No, let's not go back.
There were, there were questions on that before we came down this way.
So, I'm gonna guess we've probably had over an hour's discussion about this. I would recommend that we un-strike the original number six, B6, because I believe that to be consistent with the rest of the zoning resolution, and I believe it's the right thing to do, I think the statement of the STR permit shall not be transferred, transferred or assigned to another individual entity or address is the route we should go.
In lieu of 9.10.7.
No, it's, it's in lieu of the ones in.
No, I, I understand that, but in lieu of 9.10.7 being stricken, that takes away a waiting period, so to speak, if we were already full in density. That would address, I think, the intent of the red number six, where we were trying to make sure someone did not go to the end of the line, uh, if there was a waiting list.
So we're getting rid of the yell.
So, if we're doing away with the density, that takes, that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that takes away a waiting list because of density issues, which is what I believe this concern was.
Right.
That you've had as far as, uh, properties that sold and would.
Right, but, but given the one we described, where if this is a new application, now you've disrupted the business to the point of, well, you have a business.
It's true, I think that's.
If I cancel two reservations in a year, I go bottom of the barrel, I don't have Airbnb. And this would say, you're, you're saying, if, if owners went from A to B, he doesn't have anything to do with short-term rentals, he just, I just write him a check. So now you're saying, from what I understand, there would be a disruption, because I have a new permit, I can't take.
You're making a good point.
Charlie, I haven't thought this all through, but I'm willing to. What about adding some language, uh, that, that process could be waived during the, the real estate transaction? So that business could continue, if that's what the seller, what the buyer desired?
Well.
Well, well, you're.
Let's save some time here, why can't we?
It's transferable.
And it's the other.
It can be.
Really, it's a modification, is all it is.
And that, and that may, maybe that's probably, maybe that's an angle that, that it could be modified to go with the new owner.
Cause I think what you're really having to find is, if the owner and manager change, game over, you start all over. If one of them, if the owner changes, in the most cases, if they have, then you're not starting over, you have a modification.
Yeah, I agree that that falls under modification.
It doesn't even affect it, Tom, it's, it's, you don't need to waiver for this thing, you're just saying, I think what Charlie's saying is that you're just transferring, it's not a modification, you're just transferring a seller to a buyer.
Right, and I don't agree with that, that's my.
I understand, but I don't think this.
But, I don't think that changed, I don't know why.
No, I'm not talking about seven, I'm talking about six.
Seven did.
Yes.
Given that it took, it took, uh, it took care of six, but it really, I don't think it does. I think we're talking about the choice between the crossed-out six and the, the six that currently is.
Right, yeah, right.
Those are the two.
Yeah, I think seven is a standalone regardless. I think it addresses its own issue, I, he said, unless we thought differently, I do think differently, respectfully, but seven, I think, is in there whether, regardless what happens to the either of the six.
I think he said Kevin, not seven.
Either two, uh, but I don't, I still don't understand, and I, I, I agree with Charlie, Tom, that, uh, we gotta keep it simple, cause this, this pretty much, having six in there means start over.
But Charlie, if I can, when I look at Airbnb, if I'm an owner and I sell my property, and a new owner comes in, if I'm renting Airbnb, why, I have to start my application Airbnb, they don't, they don't just transfer.
But, but your premise is that the owner has the listing, he doesn't. I, as a tenant, have the listing, you don't have anything to do with it.
If you're a manager, okay, well then we would address it as a manager.
That's the agent, you know, that we allow for.
Yeah, I'm saying, management company stays the same, you know, it goes from A to B.
To Airbnb.
Airbnb is not, the Airbnb listing is not under the owner, it's under the manager.
Okay, but what about the people that own their home and were, were using you? Then Airbnb would, would stop their rental process, and they'd have to reapply.
Yes.
So really, we would address management companies, not ownership.
You're going to say, he also wants, wants the owner to be able to fire you.
Right.
But not everybody may be listed.
Airbnb stops the process and you're an offer to do so to property. That new owner cannot just start Airbnb, they've got to reapply.
But that conversation, no, that conversation deals with whether or not you're hosted. It may not be. It may not be a hosted platform, it might be a private individual.
Let's go back here, guys, to the, the issue. The real issue is you have to have somebody accountable. That if you call, then, then most, in the cases, it's either the owner or the agent. Right? Okay, and so if the agent doesn't change, doesn't matter who the owner is.
We don't know that.
Well, why?
The owner may hire a new agent.
Well, it doesn't matter.
And then they'll let you know that they hired a new agent.
Yes.
Yes, they have five days to let us know.
Right, yeah. So then, then you, then you can redo it if you wanted to.
So I offered a language back in October that said, if they both change, that's the end. If one of them changes, if the ownership changes and the management company doesn't change, then change, you just.
Because it's always, it is an STR, it's been classified as an STR, you don't have to reclassify it.
But how does the county know then that that's a good ownership?
We have files, we have files.
Five days to notify. So that might occur. And that's an existing STR that we're aware of.
The John Pauler.
I think you have to allow for that to happen personally.
Otherwise, it's like you've got a liquor license at a bar and the, the, the ownership of the building changed. But now he's, he's got to terminate his liquor license. He knows he's got five years of business invested because the building owner changed. And it's the same, it's the same art that it's always been.
And let's work on that language.
That's, I, I agree.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt you before we lose our entire audience?
Well, we're getting down to, yeah, go ahead.
Because I have an issue I wanted to bring up. The county commissioners received a letter from a lawyer named Mason Simpson, dated April 2. And I remember Mr. Simpson is monitoring this meeting and heard anything from him. But he makes reference to an LLC called Property Rights Protection Association. I'm wondering, and this has nothing to do with any of you as individuals. I'm wondering if any of you are part of that LLC. And I don't have any other questions, I just want to know if, is, is anybody here part of this? All right, because he says he represents a number of STRs. So I just, for the record, I want to state that.
There's phone numbers on there, just phone numbers.
And if Mr. Simpson is monitoring, I would certainly like to hear from him.
All right, let's, there's some phone numbers in them. One, it might be, can we ask who the numbers are, the last four, whatever?
I may not want to tell you.
Let's find out.
You can ask them.
Give me a number. Where is it?
Well, just ask if anybody's calling in, right?
And we've got, we've got several of them. Okay, there's a phone number, 7193.
I, I wouldn't say the entire.
Okay, 7118 is the last four, yes. And I don't know who that person is. 7118, and they are muted.
And I'm not asking anybody to identify themselves if they feel uncomfortable doing so. I just wanted to make it part of this record that I need to know, Mr. Simpson says he's representing, representing a number of property owners sufficient that they're pooling their resources. They would be necessary, they would have the funds to finance long-term litigation. And he attached a copy of a draft of a complaint against the Board of County Commission if they're against the Custer County, actually. If they go through with this short term resolution, or short term rentals resolution. And I just had a question that I would hope that maybe anybody who is one of these parties would communicate to Mr. Simpson. Otherwise, I would assume that the letter that he sent, it's his name on it, but it's signed, it's signed Mason C. Simpson by Molly Smous, Smous, who appears to be a secretary or apparently it was something. I wanted some acknowledgement from Mr. Simpson that this letter was sent out with this authorization and with the consent of his clients, or at least the majority of his clients.
Have you reached out to him at all?
I have not. I reached out and I'm initially asking for a name, for the names of the people who were in this LLC and I never got a response. I LLC shows up, it's there from the site of this. Property Rights Protection Association, but for a show of innocence. They sent out a letter to a bunch of our property owners.
So is there anybody here that's part of that?
I don't think that's somebody that asks for people to come forward.
I'm not asking for any, anything about the people themselves. This is directed toward Mr. Simpson and his tactics. And that's all I'm going to say on this. I'll make my own decision what I want to do then. As a licensed lawyer who's obligated to follow the code of professional conduct. That's, that's what I'm concerned about here. So I'll listen to you back here.
Do you all understand the code of conduct is what he's working, not the lawsuit?
I understand that, I just don't feel it's appropriate to ask if anyone's in this room involved in that. That's all I'm getting at.
All right, I wasn't even going to ask names or anything. I mean, I don't know all of you like these commissioners do, but it has nothing to do with the clients themselves. It's the possible misconduct of the attorney in the way he's approaching, if he is. So I'll take that up with him now. I'll do a good, yeah, I guess you just have it down.
There's only one phone number that I see.
So gentlemen, do you want to postpone this or do you want to deal with this? B6.
I think I'd deal with it and get it over with. Because unless we want to, there was a suggestion to reword that so that it made sense.
Charlie.
Well, to my, wait, am I interrupting? Sorry.
No, I just saw what Charlie was saying. It looks like he was sleeping.
So from my perspective, either the yellow six goes in or the red six goes in. I think they're on both sides of that coin.
Right.
Is that, would you guys agree?
Again, Tom?
I'm saying that the yellow six or the red six, one of those two should be included.
And the.
Okay, and I think the red six up represents the opposite of the yellow six. My recommendation to my fellow commissioners was the yellow six goes in, the red six goes out.
So that's an either or, and the only other thing, because I believe that, personally, there ought to be an ability to transfer a permit to the agent that's representing an owner, because owners can change, I believe, without an impact. In fact, it's an STR, we're not reinventing a wheel. So, and if both could change, then the new owner has to apply and that makes sense to me. So I don't know why that would be an issue. Unless we want to straighten out the red and make it inclusive of what we mean. It's not, because this way it could be either way. If the property management guy changes, then the, the old owner, why can't he fire a property manager and still keep his STR?
Well, they can. I mean, that's already been addressed as far as that goes, because if they change, they have five days to let you know who the new representative is.
So.
It's not a property manager's issue with me, it's the owner.
It's an owner's issue.
So.
We don't allow transfer of anything else in the zoning resolution, right?
If you're going to be consistent with the rest of the document, then you better, if the S U P goes with the person, not the property. So the STR should be with the person that owns the property.
Can I ask you a question for clarification? I could be wrong on the number, but this STR permit is a type of variance, just like the other four are, in the resolution, correct?
Correct.
It's still part of the resolution.
Correct.
That's my point about the consistency. The entire resolution is in opposite of the red six, in my opinion.
Correct.
Just out of curiosity, what happens if the owner of the permit?
Speak loudly.
What happens if the owner of the permit sells their current property, buys new property, and is still wanting to continue with the short term rental? Do they have to get a new permit altogether?
Yeah.
And go through the entire process all over again?
Yeah, because it's a new.
So what if they have reservations, and I'm just.
Different, different location.
What if they have reservations in the pipeline that we're going to transfer over to a new location?
In my opinion, if he was willing to sell that property, he would give that up. That's a choice that that property owner would make.
Is there any way to have a transfer of permanent form and a new inspection at the new property and not have to go through this whole process all over again?
But what, but you don't save much, Lisa, to do that. There's not much, it's a 30 day process anyway.
Now, it's not 30 days.
It'd be 60 days anyway.
Well, that.
It's about 60 days.
But, but.
It's a whole new address, a whole new property, a whole new neighborhood. Yeah, that's, you can't, no, that's not allowed, because we have to be consistent. And I have to have a job that's consistent. I can't say, well, wait a minute. You don't have to do this on this permit, but you got to do it on this permit. Consistency is huge. In fact.
Another question. If someone is buying a property that's a short term rental and they would also like to keep it a short term rental, can they begin the process before they own the property to know that they'll be able to continue? Or no, because they need to then have the title to the property?
Well, that's interesting, because a lot of people who get a special use permit want to know if they can have that special use permit before they go out with all that money. So I don't see a problem with that.
But eventually, Greg says, you have to prove ownership.
Right. Say, we have like your special use permit and I want to buy a hundred acre ranch. I want to know that I can run a business on that before I spend the money.
Well, clearly commissioners feel differently about number six. We, we know that, because we've had this discussion over and over and over again. I indicated to my fellow commissioners that I, I would be willing to consider something here. I just.
Yeah, we got to figure that.
If that's wording, then I'm, I'm open to that. I just believe we should adhere to a variance going with the property and not the individual. So.
With, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, so really that's, God, I'm, I'm an idiot to say this, so that's really kind of my final thought.
That is absurd.
No, I'll, I'll prove that that's not true. That's my intent.
In regards to some of this conversation here, then if a new owner were allowed to start the process before closing and upon closing.
She still does.
That has, that, at that point, they can prove their ownership. That way they could actually be through the process before the transfer of ownership. But is that something that would work for you, Tom?
You are not going to like what I'm about to say to you, sir.
No, I asked the question.
I know. This is what you're not going to like. I didn't hear your question because I was informing Commissioner Candy that there's somebody with their hand.
He was talking.
So I went totally off the rails. I have no idea what you just said.
You may like the answer, Ken.
In regards to the conversation as far as the new owner being able, a prospective owner being able to start the process before closing. Be, as long as they were able to provide ownership upon closing of the property. Would, would a language like that added to the end of the yellow number six be something that you would be?
Wholeheartedly, I would entertain that.
Absolutely.
I'm not trying to kill the whole industry. I just don't believe we'd be consistent. So I'm good with adding some language, whatever, whatever those words look like. Is that reasonable to let them continue to, to function while this transfer of real estate occurs? But, but not automatically transfer the STR to the new owner.
If that's overlap. Jackie just described our combination.
What's there?
Hold, hold the pot for a second. Karen, Karen's son has been trying to ask a question related to this. Let her talk here for a second. And then let's do it. Karen, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I got you. So go ahead and ask your question and then, or make a point.
Okay, we're just, our question is, is it possible for the new owner that would be buying the property to get first in line for that new application? Or will they have to go to the bottom of the line and it could be years till they could get it?
Karen, Karen, you've been missing some of the discussions we've had. There is no further line anymore.
We took, we did away with.
No cap.
So there's no waiting line.
Oh, that's great. Okay, I did miss that part.
Okay, but I'm glad you held your hand up for as long as you did.
So Jackie and I guess Charlie, language, let's, for just the sake of discussion, assume that the yellow stick, yellow number six is in place and then add the language, something to the effect of,
Unless.
However. That the transfer of real estate should not cause a disruption of that business. I don't know, I'm just throwing that out. I'm not sure that's accurate.
Or another sentence.
You left speaker up, sir, I'm sorry.
In, in adding a sentence in six that says.
The yellow six.
The yellow six that said to the effect that the new owner has the option of applying for a permit and with the purpose of avoiding disruption of service or something.
In order to avoid a disruption of service, you could say however, in order to avoid a disruption of service, the new owner has the option to apply or as early as possible in order not to interrupt them.
Apply in advance.
In advance to owning it and then prove ownership later. I mean, that's, that sounds consistent.
How about the new owner has the option of applying for an STR permit, the new STR permit, sorry, without interrupting the rental process? Again, I'm not saying it's perfect, I'm just throwing that out as a talking point.
In advance to the.
Option to transfer.
The transfer.
To encourage that proposed new owner could start the process, why not? You did the deal sell through. Go ahead. I'm just doing, I'm just doing like you do. Go ahead.
In advance to the property transfer.
Yeah. That's what I said. You were interrupting me when you said it.
Keep Karen back up here.
How was this?
Hey, so I've got it written down.
Trying to make it so that we have a transition from the seller to the buyer. Now we're looking, we're going around the outside trying to get to the same point.
I'm not tracking with you 100%, Vic, I'm sorry.
We're trying, we're trying to make it, at least in the, in the red line, we're trying to make it so that the seller can transfer to the buyer the STR permit.
Right.
Which I understand is not consistent with regular S U Ps.
Right.
But how is this language about continuing? How is that?
Yeah, that's, I understand your point. It's almost like, well, wait a minute, you're saying you don't want to, but then you add this language in that's going to allow for it, right? It's almost like, well, wait a minute, you're saying you don't want it, but then you add this language in that's going to allow for it, right? How about, because we've already got language in there about any activity, I'll paraphrase, kind of want to go look it up, any activities being conducted while a pending permit is, or while a permit application is pending, is going to be a problem, correct? No, it wouldn't. It, it would be a new application process if the land changed.
New application, but they have to have where it stays here, they don't, they don't have to have, they just have to have an application.
Right.
Form, because there's no.
Yeah, initially, when I looked at this, I said, well, you know what? If I have an STR and I'm booked up and I decide to sell it, that's on me. I run the risk of either losing those customers, or losing my rating, or losing my deposits, whatever. If I don't want to do that, then I don't sell my property. I stop taking reservations so that when all of my current obligations to my renters are satisfied, then I can sell my property and not have to go through any penalties, right? That's a choice.
I look at it totally differently.
I, I don't doubt that, and I'd like.
You also have a right to sell our business.
Yeah. And one hand, you make a big deal of calling it a business, and then you say, but we're not going to treat it like any other business. We're going to go in there, we're going to cut, you cut the baby in half, and guess what? The baby's not going to live. That's what you're doing.
It might not live in.
Red, red seven, red, red six, actually, seems like it would not do that. And I don't think you guys want to just, oh, kill that business. It takes years to develop this. It takes.
So, so from a business point of view, people buy the, the business, you know, the life, the bill, the count receivable, whatever. In this case, it's people receivable. So you're not wanting to lose that, and that new owner wants to come in and just start managing, have you managed, continue to manage. So there ought to be a way that Tom brought up, and I think Jackie almost hit the right answer, is to be able to transfer that before it breaks the line, let him continue booking people, like we've said, and then get the land deal cut, and then once it transfers ownership, then, then it becomes a pending permit.
So why is it different? What is it?
Well, it's a long, I agree with what you're saying, that coming six works. But we want to add.
No.
Add to the yellow six and make it look kind of like red six.
So why don't, why don't you just take a vote? You want the yellow six and the red six?
Well, that's true, that's the point, Jackie.
That's where we started, but it.
I was hoping to find some common ground.
Common ground is what.
But maybe there isn't. It either is or it isn't. Maybe there's no common ground here. I mean, if we try to water it down, then it's going to be.
Well, I, I think, I think we were there. I mean, why can't the new owner, I mean, these deals don't just occur overnight. All of a sudden, I got a bug in my burr under my salad, a bug in my bonnet, whatever you want to call it, to go buy an STR. And it takes time to cut that deal. You know, I gotta argue about price, it takes a while. But once he starts, he can start that process to apply for that permit. I mean, what, what's wrong with that?
And could he rent? Could he have?
Well, that option's still going on, because the old owner still owns it.
But once it sells, can he have occupants in there before he gets his permit?
Well, that's what we said they could do initially, because that's like an existing STR that exists today. We're not, we're not saying turn it off and restart it. So that it fits that.
I'll use example, and Charlie brought it up. I, I asked Kelly about it. If a, if I own a liquor store and I sell that, the new owner's going to have to go get a liquor license. He cannot ride the coattails of my liquor license.
No, but, but the building, most bars lease a building.
Oh, well, they might, they might own the building, right? I know people who own liquor stores in this town.
But he's, the point he made.
Does the building and ownership change? The person that has the license?
Well, the new owner's not going to sell any liquor until he has a liquor license in his name.
It's not the owner with the liquor license.
But I thought you were going to say, maybe.
I thought I qualified, I thought I qualified my statement by saying, back to Charlie's example, that's the thinking.
I'm getting punchy.
Believe me, I know exactly which meaning you mean. We've been at it since nine.
So, why can't we do this? Why, why can't the new owner apply or fill out an application and start the process ahead of time? And then transfer that on the sale, when you own it. Then, then you've got a pending application.
Oh, that's what I said here?
Yeah.
Well, I move, I strike the red and re-insert the yellow.
That's a big motion.
That's a real motion.
Did you bring a motion?
I did, yes, that was a motion. The chair is obligated to ask for a second.
I'm asking for a second. I can't offer the second myself.
Why not?
Because I don't want it.
Oh, well, you can't. I said you can't offer, oh, cool. But you gotta ask.
But I'm gonna ask my able-bodied commissioner next to me if he wants the second.
Well, I think there's room in parliament, parliamentary law for me to move and second my own. Oh, wait, maybe not.
Not, not. I would like to work.
You have to ask for it twice, sir.
If there's no second, I would, I would like to, I would offer a motion, but I'll wait.
Well, parliamentary law says you gotta ask for a second twice.
Okay, I'll ask for the second.
Second, and my motion dies.
And I, I'm, I gotta second.
Then I would highly encourage someone sitting at this table that is commissioner to do something, because we are dragging.
Okay, so I would offer a new motion, and let's try this one. I would move that we strike the red six, reopen up the yellow six, and add a sentence that allows for the transfer of an owner, you say, with a, with the, however. Vic's going nuts. To start the application process upon we.
This was written by your county attorney.
I know. Maybe you want him to read.
Red six was, yellow six.
Red six was, yes.
So, all right, let's turn to our county attorney. How can we say, keeping the, giving them an ability to transfer it without risking losing the clientele that you're buying? That's how you're buying a business. We got.
Are you trying to tune down this?
I do it, I do it.
Well, you know, if I may, counselor, I understand your spirit here, Bill, of trying to hit that middle ground of, and I wouldn't have a problem with language being here, that a prospective owner can begin the process. We're not transferring anything.
Not until it happens.
He can begin the process, he can come in and apply before he ever owns a property if there's a pending real estate sale. I, I get that. But I just struggle with this whole language about transferring this variance with the property and not the owner.
Let me ask Lucas some questions. Lucas, you, you've dealt with, in other places, transfer of licenses. That was a job you had before. This is like that, and you've heard, we're trying to maybe make apples and oranges, make lemon juice. Could you, you have a suggestion on the, to help Clint?
So some states allows a liquor license to transfer states with the building location. I mean, owner just has to go and reapply with that liquor license. So a lot of towns do liquor license, going, we're only going to allow five businesses that have liquor licenses. And they control the amount of bars at the time, right? Colorado isn't one of those. Colorado's different, right? So, right, and so. But my licenses are not transferable to anybody. They're not transferable to my son, they're not transferable to anybody. And then, when a lot of states have gone to, let's say, master licenses, all those who already had an A-type license or C license were just allowed to automatically get a state license without having to reapply, go through the process, go through the testing, go through the years of experience.
Because that business already.
Because they already had shown all that time. It's on that moment they got their initial license.
And that's where I was with this, the existing STR, it's not a new business. And we have the ability, because we're not, it's not liquor license, but we have the ability to modify this.
So I'll use, since disciples were already kind of here, they have lost out on three people interested in certain property, because we as a community have decided what we were going to do with short-term rentals, and what kind of permit process or special use or whatever. And then suddenly, they lost out, because the owners go, wait a minute, our new clients have gone. Until we know what's.
Not going to come. Right. And that's why I don't want to stunt this. I'm, we're going to leave here knowing what we're doing.
We need some language so we can get.
Right. So, and that's what we need. So we need to get Clint.
Mostly inspection. And Jackie, you're probably, but mostly inspection is the, the permit of, has it been inspected legally? Probably, and set, right? So maybe you can sustain the property.
Right.
If that's where, and the owner doesn't get to take it, because he goes to a new property and it's not.
And, and the, and then things are already posted in the windows, because they're conforming. We ought to build a short circuit, something.
Right. It's already got the sign, she already has the notification to go to that address or, or that property manager, maybe, that, hey, there's a wildfire here, or asking you to do that.
So I think that's reasonable.
Basically, what you're saying is it would go with the property and not the owner.
Right. Because you've already inspected the property.
It's already.
As long as you're inspecting people as we are inspecting properties.
And what that does is, and what Jackie talked about earlier, is that goes against the consistency, because on the S T, on the special use permits, it goes with the owner and not the property. That's what, that's what you're saying.
And with respect, Lucas, we're not talking about transferring inspections. We're talking about transferring the waiver, or, sorry, the variance to the zoning resolution, right?
So, so what I'm trying to do is look at, how do we meld it? And it becomes hybrid. We're not, I'm not suggesting we let them off the hook to apply. And, you know, and, but what we are looking at, it already has had a, a, a set system. They're already conforming to the same things that you go off and make that happen here. I, I don't see why we can't come up with a process that allows that to happen and still can make it conform, be consistent, because we're not letting the owner, the new owner has to have a permit.
So, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Got another idea?
So red six, an STR permit once issued for a specific property may be transferred to a subsequent purchaser of said property. I don't agree with that. However, if, if we have to find some common ground, which we do, or somebody else makes a motion and we vote on it, then I would not be in favor of leaving the language in about this transfer will be an administrative action to county planning and zoning office. I think that if that transfer is going to go through, maybe this is counterproductive to the whole thing.
Then it becomes a planning zoning issue.
Yeah, really, it, it doesn't. If we're going to allow the first sentence in six, then that's the end of the discussion.
But that first sentence could be changed under certain circumstances. A permit could be transferred if it is a an owner that intends to continue the business. It's an existing business and already has, meets all performance requirements. And then that would require, and, and maybe it's a planning and zoning certificate, not Jackie as an administrative arm, but perhaps it goes back to the planning, zoning, to take a look and recertify.
Why don't we just make it simple? And put, the STR permit shall not be transferred or assigned to another individual entity or address without the new owners applying and being approved for the STR. And then we get a fee, we start all over. They have, but you could, that's basically saying, I bought the property, but I want the STR, but my property transfer won't go through for three months, but I can apply.
Yeah, that, okay, you're, you're saying treat it just like the other with the bunkhouse issue.
Yes.
It's a new, it's a business that exists.
It's a business.
I'm going to lie to continue going until you get a new application complete.
Because we need a new fee.
Well.
I had that part underlined.
That may work.
Kevin, you've got one.
I, I still want to lose the business either. I, I hear you, Charlie.
Kevin, do it.
Could you restate that last part of that, that you had?
Okay, an STR permit once issued for a specific property may be transferred to a subsequent purchaser of said property. Then I got rid of the whole planning and zoning thing. The STR permit shall not, oh, no.
No, you were.
You were up to the yellow.
Then I went, the STR permit shall be trans, shall not be transferred or assigned to another individual entity. The new owner has the option to apply for another STR permit prior to obtaining title to the property.
Title to the property, to. You get to let them apply, or that's all.
Which is allowing someone, if I want to buy your property, I still want to run an STR. I, we're allowing you to come in and start the process so that it doesn't lose the clients.
And Charlie, to me, as a property owner, you would be obliga, or a manager, you'd be obligated if that, you should know that's going to happen. And you ought to know well ahead of them transitioning, think, you, you need to say, you better get this into the works now, or you will lose the pending reservations we have out there.
So, Mr. Chairman? So I had written down, the new owner may apply for a new STR permit prior to taking possession of said property.
Yeah. That, that does it.
Then you're going to have to take out the application, has to provide.
No.
The ownership of the property.
No, because that has to occur before he can do it. He still has to prove that he's got it. He can apply all he wants. If he never gets title, he's not going to get, he's not going to get the permit. He legally has that in.
Does that language address the intent?
Yep, I think so.
The language may not be perfect, but the idea is there that.
Because that permit already exists. It doesn't, it continues until that old owner goes away, and that permit that he has goes away. And that other new permit has to.
Make it short and simple.
I'm, I'm just.
We're going to have a fee, because he's starting all over.
Yeah, you're starting all over. He's going to start with that initially. He's still got to prove he owns it in six months after he started talking about it.
We just don't want to be able to, like, Charlie manages a lot of short-term rentals. Correct me if I'm wrong, Charlie. We just don't want, like, if Jackie sells her short-term rental and gamifies it, we just don't want to lose your clients, because that's a business.
That's what you're buying.
Yes. So this is just a way to continue the business without losing all that money.
Keep the business flowing.
Exactly.
And it sort of meets the same thing Lucas was talking about on, you know, liquor licenses, some cities do. But that can be our process. It keeps consistency, we're making everybody apply.
I change.
Well, with this S U P, we have, like, let's just take Sanderson. Before Sanderson got titled to the property, even though he got denied, a lock-in stern stole on the property.
Right.
And he didn't get titled because of the COVID, and the transfer and stuff, and that, because they had to stay home. So we let them initially for supply, even though they can have the property. You want to spend the money and you don't get the property, it's not going to hurt anybody.
Right. I like that.
So I changed the word to say a prospective new buyer or new owner. Actually, well.
Well, I'd just say a new owner.
A new owner.
A new owner. It may be transferred, because that, that implies there's a new owner.
Well, we're not transferring it.
No.
We're going to let it continue.
Yes, that's right.
While the real estate transaction.
Property transfers to a new owner. There's going to be a new title.
A new owner may apply for a new STR permit prior to taking possession of said property.
If they apply.
And it may not, that's right.
Yeah, there's still, you still have to go through the process.
No, she's right.
It says that they can apply the new S T R prior to the closing of the property, but it doesn't address the business of the S T R being able to continue uninterrupted.
And maybe we start off that way, let's add that in order to continue the business, a new owner may apply.
So you could say uninterrupted S T R business may continue and we have new owner can apply.
Yes. That business can continue clear up to the last minute that that transfer occurs.
Right.
And then boot the next reservation off if it doesn't get.
It just needs to be stated.
So how about adding the language without interruption of the current S T R rentals?
And then if you could read that back, yeah, let's get the whole sentence. Make sure you get your period in there.
So a new owner may apply for a new S T R permit prior to taking possession of said property without causing an interruption.
In order to not cause interruption, is that right?
Let him finish, please.
I thought he did. Go ahead, Tom, say it loud.
A new owner may apply for a new S T R permit prior to taking possession of said property without causing an interruption of existing rental business.
Should it say possession or closing? I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Yeah, I wondered about that when I said possession, I thought, well, they won't take possession until they close, but.
I would say they close.
Prior to the. Yeah, prior to taking title.
Cause that's technical possessions.
Right, and our other language says they have to prove, they have to prove ownership, right? So blah, 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 of a new S T R permit prior to taking title of said property without causing an interruption of existing rental business.
I move that we strike the red six, reinstate the yellow six with the added language.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to strike the red six, unstrike the yellow six and add the language, say it.
The language that Tom gets read.
The same, that language that is.
As printed.
As printed. As, as.
As red, I read it too.
All right, all in favor, or let's, been moved and seconded, any other discussion, anybody want to take the risk? Okay, all in favor, say aye, Kevin.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Aye, Kevin. Now, wordsmith, then I was, I was.
I will read it one more time. Let me get this cleaned up. So six would now read, the S T R permit shall not be transferred or assigned to another individual entity or address. A new owner may apply for a new S T R permit prior to taking title of said property without causing an interruption of existing rental business. Mr. Chairman, we'll talk about somebody going out on a limb. I would move that we adopt nine point one zero, an amendment to the zoning resolution entitled Short Term Rental Permit.
I'll second that. Any discussion? We've made all the corrections.
Is this for discussion now?
Yes.
I wanted to put something in the record, the gentleman pointed out earlier about insurance. I want the board aware that it's very unlikely that many of the S T R owners do not have sufficient insurance. Again, they think they're covered by their homeowners and also I'm very concerned about the number of the S T Rs that are in the movie, which is wild and gross, everybody. And how vulnerable we are to forest fires and they do not have sufficient liability coverage if there were a fire for the damage they would cause. Because we've had the two instances, I'm distributing this, I think, that we've had two significances with fires with S T Rs in our subdivision. And they both were forcing put out before they could get out of hand. But it was okay, they did one during the middle, big burn, total burn, I mean, and another one was just careless.
Which sub did he?
What properties? I live there.
I'm not gonna make you do the same because.
Well, I know there were fires, but they had nothing to do with short-term rentals.
No, they, when we did that, it was it. And we had also, we had a, we had a, we had a bunch of, the rent went out on, tried to add some adjacent property and fired weapons over thirty-five.
So that, you're right, that shouldn't be done, but that's a responsibility of that owner.
Yeah, I, I went and we did that.
The new owner.
Just that we did took care of it.
Okay.
At this point, I'm, I'm the insurance lawyer, I feel like we're uninsured and they are uninsured.
Okay, thanks. Has everybody, there's some wordsmithing that may occur or is occurring, what are you doing?
We're fine, it's the documents.
So.
As is.
The only issue I had with that wording is it says, it will, how did, how did you say that? A new owner may apply for a new S T R permit prior to taking title of said property without causing an interruption, I would say in order to not cause interruption, that's all. Because that's what you're really doing. I don't know what, how do you know it's not gonna cause interruption? Does it matter? Probably doesn't matter.
No.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Sorry, Ben.
No, I know, that doesn't, I'm trying to make it Englishly correct, that's all.
Can you just sign my piece of paper, Ken?
Maybe. Okay, uh, any other discussion on, we just have, we have a motion, it's been seconded, to stop this resolution, correct?
Correct.
Any other discussion on that before we go? All right, uh, I don't hear any, we see any online?
I would like to ask a question of the people that have patiently been here for four hours. Whether you're an S T R owner or not, my question would be, to the best of your ability to decipher what we've been doing, do you think this is a fair and reasonable document?
I would.
I wouldn't go that far, Tom, while you're asking that, they already told us.
I'll lay very, very brief, but, uh, because I've been in the business, the one we've been incumbent, it's actually the more hurdles you present, the better it is for my business. But I believe in property rights, I believe in free market. I think this is a gross, overstatement, it's one size fits all. You know, sending out a letter to people, hey, you're out of violation. I have statistics on that property, on one of them, that you gotta call on. The average number of people there is, uh, three point seven and has capacity of seven now and then, I don't know. And just saying, that's, that's all. So it's in my best interest for my business to have, make it difficult because my rates will go up and my occupancy will go up, the places I have in the county and in the town. But as a constitutionalist, I think it's horrible.
Can I ask a follow-up question, sir?
Go ahead, anything I'm gonna ask.
So, do you, do you think it is? Do you think it's an infringement upon anybody's personal rights to have to adhere to regulations if they want to operate a business?
Great point, this goes back to twenty eighteen, you and I had a very brief email exchange because, uh, I read the, I read the resolution and it was very specific. It, it says there wasn't a business definition, it said, uh, retail slash commercial, focused on the commercial traffic. And, 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 and we don't have commercial traffic. I have my business in town, people go in and out, but it would be, they have less activity because it's about fifty-five percent occupancy, there's less activity than would be for a full-time business.
But you did not answer my question. Is it a violation of property rights to expect somebody to adhere to regulations if they choose to operate a business in the unincorporated portion of Custer County?
And my response did do that, I think it's, it's proper to do that if it treats commercial traffic because that's what you're, and does it change the land use?
You're talking traffic or business.
We are not, that's the thing, business is so vague.
Okay, I didn't use the word commercial because that's not in this document anywhere.
Well, I know, but that was in, that is in the current document and it was, I think, wisely defined because it was focused on the impact on the land. And we were not changing any impact on the land, whether someone stays twenty-nine days or I have a six-month rental, it's the same thing, except there's fewer people because the general has only about fifty percent occupancy.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, you make up a word of business, but it's so vague. These guys have a jewelry business, they, they make this, they, right, it's all right, Dan?
Oh, yeah.
I'm speaking for you, but whatever, you make business, now you've got, the doors open to, to go after anyone that's doing anything for monetary, uh, benefit in the county, in the residence.
Thank you.
I just believe that if you're operating, you're doing anything for revenue and the IRS says you're a business, you're a business. And I don't, I don't understand that our, our subdivision under a well permit says that the properties are to be single-family residents. I don't believe when you've got people showing in and out weekend after weekend and just unrelated individuals, that that's a single-family residence. That's a hotel.
All right, good point, um, Charlie, I would, uh, the point is not to, Tom keeps using the word regulate, we were trying to get a handle on, it's, it's a residential business, not a commercial business, that's by definition. The, the commercial businesses that exist in homes are already taxed by the federal government, income tax, right? So, uh, it, there's a bit of difference is all I'm trying to say. And I, I, I quite understand why it improves your business to have more regulation, didn't make sense to me.
Oh, sure, and, and it's already, it's already dropped, the number of short-term rentals have already dropped about fifteen percent. Why, why?
Why?
Because of all this talk.
Well, the, the talk's over, I'm talking about after the talk.
It's all, I mean, you've, you've been putting up essentially, the pub, the public relations of this is that the county's gonna crack down on it. So I know, I know several people have said, I'm out of it, I've told them.
I don't doubt that, but my point is after the smoke clears, what is gonna cause it to be any less, you're gonna get, you're, you're gonna return back to normal.
So I have to come half-hand and look at my information.
No, you don't, not anymore.
And because, uh, I, I backed a Friday candidate, I might lose one vote.
Now, Charlie, I disagree, it's a hot real estate market in Custer County. And I believe that if I had a short-term rental, what a hassle that would be, but I can get a lot of money for my house, I'm selling. I asked two people that got out of the short-term rental and they said it's because the hot market on real estate, they doubled their price on the house.
And, and this, Charlie.
But that doesn't matter.
This is an arduous process, it's, it's, it's signing a couple pieces of paper and showing that you've got a septic system. And, uh, you know, what is hard about that?
But I, can I make a point? Excuse me?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, no, it, I, I agree with what you just said, if indeed it was that simple, because, you know, we all trust Jackie's ability to confirm that our septics are in order, we have well and everything, but to go to all these additional meetings in person and take two months, like, that's, I think, what most of the owners have a problem with.
It's two meetings. Okay, so that's why I said when the smoke clears, I don't think it's gonna be an issue personally, but I could be wrong, you can, I'll buy you a steak dinner at Alpine.
Granted, they're not huge hurdles, but any, anything you regulate, people get those.
Well, I agree with that. It's not called regulation, otherwise.
It's five meetings. If you look at this, appear in person to do this, appear in person to do this, appear in person to do this. Now granted, those first three appear in persons are if deemed necessary, okay? And then you have to meet again and then you have to meet again.
See, the only, that's twice, so I think there's two real ones. The other ones are if you don't have a system that complies, you gotta go out and show that.
There's two real meanings, three facials for Jackie.
All right, I think that, Tom was your question, you brought it.
Yeah.
Okay, we got one, um, one last comment from John's new phone, whoever that is.
That's Karen and John's son at Three Peaks Ranch. We think it's a great resolution, I'm, we're pretty happy right now. So I know it's probably not the popular opinion amongst the rest of the S T R owners, but I think we've come a long ways.
Okay, thanks, Karen, thanks, John's new phone.
Anytime.
All right, are we good back here now or we got other concerns? Well, that's okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll call for the question.
Okay, uh, call for the vote, one other discussion, Kevin, period. The vote was for. Approve, uh, the resolution nine point one, of the new zoning and planning resolution, amended and planning and zoning.
And to be correct, sir, if I may, my, when I call for the question, it really needs to be voted on because I'm trying to interrupt your gentleman's right to any more debate.
We understand that.
So we shouldn't vote on the, on my motion first and if it passes, then we vote automatically, no more debate.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, that makes sense, so he called the question.
I did.
All right, so it's been called for a conference, any, there's no debate out there?
No.
So all in favor of getting on, basically say aye, Kevin?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Ken, aye.
So now we would need to vote on the question.
All right, so I'll call for that.
What did you just?
We don't need to.
It was to get off the dime and.
I, I call for the question, which if passed, ends all debate and we vote on the motion immediately.
Right, so it's just a firm out to get, calling for the question. All right, next would be, uh, we've had a motion to consider and the proposed amended planning and zoning resolution.
To adopt.
To adopt that resolution. I have a second, that was seconded, wasn't it? It was seconded, so call for the vote. Kevin?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Ken, aye.
Is the meeting over?
It will be.
Will you would sign that document in front of here?
Who asked if the meeting's over?
Oh, what's your name back there?
It's better be relevant to a beer, to a beer capable by tourism.
What kind of scene do you adjourn the meeting, it's over.
So what? Okay, all right, uh.
Kevin, are you saying?
No, I'm gonna do my thing, the meeting is adjourned.
Oh, I need my document signed.
Sign some document.
I can sign that.
We don't have to be in the meeting.
No.